So, one, sorry I have a mint in my mouth, I sound really funny on the microphone. And I will call the study session to order to discuss our asphalt maintenance and I'll turn it over to Director Goldie.
Well, good evening Mayor and members of council, everybody's favorite subject, asphalt maintenance. It's not quite as fun as watching paint dry, but watching asphalt cures.
Hey, I'm excited.
So, we're going to do a little asphalt maintenance 101 today. We're going to talk about the Integrated Pavement Management Program that the city has been using for about 20 years now, and we continue to update and upgrade that system. So, we'll go over what is an Integrated Pavement Management System, pavement condition index, preventative maintenance versus pavement replacement, we'll talk a little bit about the asphalt deterioration curve, and then the main fund is talking about how we do our budget forecasting, and at what level should we be funding our street maintenance program. So, this is our most expensive program in the city, it's one of our largest assets, if not our largest asset that we have. So, in talking with Mayor Pro Tem Holland, he wanted to talk more about funding and how, what level should we be funding this program? So, Integrated Pavement Management System is not just software or data that we use to look at how is our pavement deteriorating, how is it lasting? It includes our drainage, our maintenance, our sweeping, anything in our right-of-way, and we'll talk a little bit about it tonight. Our right-of-way permitting program has a lot to do with how we manage our pavement. And we even manage our snowplows differently because of the way we manage our pavement. So, there are a lot of things that go into this. So, the focus of our system is to focus on the life cycle of the pavement. How long can we make this pavement last? What can we do so we don't have to go in and replace asphalt all of the time? How do we keep those service levels consistent? A lot of cities you'll see, and I'll talk about it later in the presentation, they get into this worst first cycle, where they pave a road and they run out of money to maintain them, so you've got a great road for a number of years, and then you've got a really bad road for a number of years. We are trying to keep ours consistent over time. And we utilize a balanced approach that includes preventative maintenance, timely rehabilitation, and selective reconstruction to be as cost-effective as we can. So, first, we'll talk about pavement condition index. So, PCI, it's a rating system from zero to 100, it's pretty self-explanatory, just like a grade in school, zero's the worst, hundreds the best. It's based on a survey of the pavement, and it's our starting point to determine what are we going to do with our roads. The data's used to be compiled manually, if any of you around remember Ralph, he used to be out there with a notebook, making these surveys. Luckily, Ryan doesn't have to do that anymore. So, we've integrated this, and it's a mix of an art and a science. The PCI is not utilized as a hard fact, fast decision-making tool, but it's an indicator and it informs our decisions. There's no replacement for having Orion on the street, taking all of the data that is now in our computer, our computer tells us, the program tells us what our PCI is, that's just a starting point. We get eyes on the road so we can make sure what maintenance we decide to do is the right maintenance at the right time.
So, quick question, so, somebody still goes out and, like Ryan's out there with his computer now?
Well, so-
And doing that, or?
So, every four or five years, we now, we use Street Logic, they have an actual vehicle that goes out with computers all over it, sensors, drives every street, looking for these type of defects. So, that computer is only so good, I mean, it gets you an average PCI for each section of the street, but we need to go out there and prove that. So, the computer and Ryan, when he's out doing his daily work, are looking for these different issues. Each of these issues tell you a different story about what needs to be done, what's the problem. For example, the alligator cracking, you can look at that, and these guys know, Dom and Ryan, that means there's water getting under your pavement. The raveling, that's just basically your tops come off, it's a great time to do some maintenance, we can reseal that, we don't have to replace that. So, each one of these tell a trained professional, here's what's going on, let's, we can do a little more investigation, try to figure out, is our drainage bad, is there something we need to change before we try to fix the pavement so we can stop this from happening again?
Slipage cracking, what's called a slipage?
Slipage, so slipage cracking is when you do an overlay and the two mats don't bind together properly. So, your top mat from heavy vehicles will move on top of your lower mat. So, PCI, it's a number, but I wanted to try to show you what, for example, what those numbers mean. So, this is Clarkson Road that we share with Inglewood, it scores a 44, it's about to failure. And then you'll look at me and say, Jay, why isn't this on our pavement replacement? So, there's a number of other factors that we're always looking at, we're always talking to all the utilities, we're always talking to Denver Water, whoever, trying to figure out, okay, do you guys have any big projects coming? If we go in and repave this street, or whatever, we're trying to avoid that cut a couple weeks later, or the next year, so we're always out there working with anybody that might be in our street, including our building department, is, if there's three scrapes on a road, let's not chip seal it until those houses are done, if possible. And, you know, ultimately, we try to do that, there's always the emergency break. So, in this case, we've been working with Inglewood for about three years to do a joint project to repave this. Inglewood and Denver Water are actually doing an interconnect this year, so they're going to be tearing up the entire road so they can interconnect their two water systems in case in an emergency they can help each other out. And Inglewood Water is also replacing 30 or 40 lead taps in this area, so we've put this one off as long as we can. Dom, who, this is Dom, Dom and his crews will be out this summer, and we're going to hold it together, we'll have to do some pretty big patches, we'll do some crack sealing, this is almost beyond crack sealing, and we'll hold that together until we know all that utility work is done, we can coordinate with Inglewood, get a good job done, get it back close to 100, and then we go on from there, doing our preventative maintenance. Yes?
The other perimeter streets, so Bellevue, Hampden, and, what is it, Holly, I guess? No, not Holly. Happy Canyon?
Yes.
I'm assuming Bellevue, Hampden, and University are all C.
Those are all C dot. Happy Canyon is half us, half Denver.
Okay.
And Jay, as you go through this, and you know, I've sent you some questions and stuff, like when you look at Clarkson and you go, PC 44, I mean, that's 30 points, 30 to 35 points lower than where we normally keep our roads. And you can tell, it looks like, but this road is substantially better than many, many roads I drive on in Denver. So, therefore, Denver must be like 20.
Well-
And that's what, and that's what I'm interested in talking about, which is the quality, et cetera, and where we keep it.
Yep.
To have, and I'm not suggesting anything, I'm saying, that's, that's what I want to understand at the end. And I, and I'm stunned at this, I'm going, wow, 44, the Denver roads are there, half that.
Yeah, PCI is, as much as we'd like to say it's not, it's subjective.
Sure, no, no.
I mean, there's, we have all different formulas and how we set our PCI, we try to be as subjective as possible, at least, it's all relative. So, this is a great example, this is Dahlia Street, we chip sealed ours two years ago, last year, brought it back up to 86, same exact street next door. Again, we tried to coordinate with Denver to do it all at once, not always easy, so we had to go in and get our work done. So, that's, that's the difference you'll see between preventative maintenance and that road may need to be replaced before they get to that.
And again, just, if you go back to that picture again, this is the thing that, again, not suggesting anything, not wanting to do anything, what I'm saying is, is that I think, and then when you get to it, it's like going, well, to do that 86, the way we're doing it, we spend a million and a half dollars a year, I don't know what these guys spend on the plus or minus 50, but if you said, well, they spend 1.25, you sit there and go, oh shit, for the extra dough, let's just keep it that way. All of a sudden, if you go, well, these guys are only spending a quarter million dollars a year, and then you go, hmm, maybe that road's not that bad. That's the stuff I think we need to be looking at and trying to decide is, is that, what do we, and then you're telling your rate, but you're telling your taxpayers, you're going, this is what we're paying for, you understand that, right? That's where the dough goes.
That's, and I've got, I've got answers to your questions at the very end here, to talk about that. So, then, this one scores a 74. Again, it's because it's an overall score, the rutting on Colorado right now is horrific. So, overall, it scores a 74, but in these spots, there's some really bad rutting, this one is actually on this year's mill and overlay program, so we're going to mill and overlay of Colorado, we can no longer use chip seal when the ruts start to get like this, we have to rebuild that first top surface. Actually, this week, we're having this street cord, so we're going to get some examples, some core samples of the asphalt to make sure that we don't have a problem in the subbase. So, we expect it to come out that we don't have a problem, that this is just from heavy use of truck traffic, so. And then you'll look at, this one, 76, and again, on our scale, the way our computer is set up, 76 would be just a chip seal. But if you go out on the road, and it's hard to tell in this picture, this is starting to rut also, so it's again, where we have eyes on the street, Ryan says, yep, the, the program tells us chip seal, but chip seal's not going to do what we need to do here, we got to get these ruts out, stop holding the water, and get that fixed. So, again, it's, it's all relative on these numbers. And then, our program, excuse me, would say, this is Carriage Lane, it's, it scores a 73. Well, we go out there and look at it, it's a 73, but there's no rutting, there's no, the edges aren't breaking off, the surface is in really good condition. Yes, the way the algorithm works, it's a 73, but you know what, we're not going to go in and repave this street, we're not going to mill and overlay, we're going to come in and do a chip seal and get another seven to 10 years out of it. So, again, it's very selective how we choose what maintenance to do. So, just real quick, preventative maintenance, or proactive maintenance, is the top two layers you see there, and in our case, it's chip seal on top, and usually a two-inch overlay. Then there's another three inches of asphalt that we try to stay out of, because now you're getting to the reactive point. If it's failed into that second layer of asphalt, or your subbase, it really does, the cost goes up about one to eight, really. For every dollar we spend on chip seal, or $3 on mill and overlay, it costs us eight to 10 to go all the way down and start over. Not to mention, it's a long process, and it really is disruptive to our residents. So, we're doing everything we can to stay out of the reactive mode. So, what is an asphalt deterioration curve? So, this curve shows you typically how asphalt will age, in general, across the board. It's somewhat predictable, you pave a road, you're in excellent condition, for the first 75% of the asphalt's life, on average, you get a 40% drop in rideability. Then, the curve goes steep, and then you get, once you've let it go past that fair point, it really starts to deteriorate a lot faster. So, the little black squiggles you see on top, or what we try to do is our preventative maintenance. We have a new road, mill and overlaid, we come in, five to six years, put a chip seal on top of it. Again, people, you have, not a lot of cities are in a position to be able to do that, you put that chip seal, you're resealing it, you're preventing water from getting in there, you're putting a new ride layer on there, and you're able to beat that deterioration curve. So, for example, that is three different chip seals, the black squiggly line, and you're just now starting to see where you're getting below our 80 PCI, or right in that fair spot, where you can still do a quick mill and overlay and get the street back up to close to 100, and it's that consistency where we have a good ride for that whole 20-plus years, instead of a nice, good road for 10 years, and then a bad road for however long you can hold it together and stop the phone calls.
Is there a third axis here, that, around utilization, so both volume and weight? Are weight limits adhered to what is the volume of the street, or it doesn't really impact?
That, well, so, on this general curve, it doesn't, because based on volume and weight, there's different formulas of asphalt that are used, different size aggregate, different asphalt compounds, so in general, it all stays about the same. So, this is just looking at a little different, and we've overlaid, you know, here's your typical deterioration curve, and here's how we try to do our maintenance. We try to keep to the top half of that critical range at any given time. So, the critical range, the middle of that, is about that 70%. So, everything we do proactively, we're trying to keep our pavement above that critical line, or just into it, before we get to maintenance. And again, you'll see, about a dollar to do maintenance, once you get into the rebuild, it's about eight more dollars, or eight dollars per unit. We haven't defined those units, those are just the variables there. And Mayor Pro Tem Holland, I did fix this, I don't know what happened when I put this in, but, so, premature pavement failure are caused by a lot of things. Improper drainage, again, traffic volume, if you don't have the right formula and your traffic volume's higher, use too small aggregate, it's going to prematurely fail your asphalt. Traffic loads, and we see, we don't see a lot, but with the number of home rebuilds we have, some of our residential roads really aren't set for 30 or 40 cement trucks to come in at one time and pour a giant foundation, so we do see some of that, and we work that into our right-of-way permitting process. Weather conditions, if you have a really long winter, really wet spring, will do things to asphalt. And subgrade, if you didn't bring in road base and you just put your road on native soil, it's going to really make that pavement fail quicker than it really should. But again, so, in our right-of-way permitting, we keep a close eye on it, because every time you put a cut in the street, it is going to make your pavement fail quicker, it's letting water in, it's, it's making the road not one solid mat anymore, where you have all the protections you need, so. So, then we take all of this information, all the data that goes into the computer, Ryan goes in there every year as maintenance gets done, as chip seals, overlays, crack seals, anything we do, he can put into the program, and it helps us budget. Again, so if you look at this, this tells us which roads look like two-inch mill and overlay, a three-inch mill and overlay on this, which we don't have a lot of, is a complete replacement, we just call it three-inch mill and overlay. A chip seal, crack seal, defer maintenance. Again, we're looking at these as a starting point, Ryan, like I explained earlier, if you look at Quincy all the way down, it shows, we should just do a chip seal, well, we know that, starting next year, we're going to have to do a mill and overlay to correct actually what's out there. actually what's out there. And it, it'll pop out this number, this list for us, and this list, you don't have to look at specifically, just tells us, here's the roads that you should do in 2025, based on their ratings, here's what you should do. And this happens to be the mill and overlay list. And you'll see Clarkson is a majority of that, even though we're taking that off of our list. So then, when we try to do our ten-year look ahead in our budget forecasts, we use that number, and as Earl said, we're gonna talk about that number, that we use at the eighty, that's where we would like to try to keep everything. It's the most efficient way of maintaining your roads, keeping them right at that eighty percent, plus or minus, there's roads in all different conditions, but as an average. So then, to do that, we plug in different numbers, and in, in this one, I plugged in two million, one point five, and so on, and it shows you, here's what you can expect in ten years, if, if this is your yearly budget. So then, I'll go back one first. You look at the difference between eighty-one and a seventy-three. There's not a huge difference, you will notice it on the road. The ride won't be so bad, but you'll notice, oh, it's starting to crack at a seventy-three, but ride-wise, the average person would probably drive down an eighty or a seventy-three and be happy. So, with Mayor Protem Holen, ask the question, well, why wouldn't we just do the seven-fifty if we can keep everybody just as happy? Well, and here's where it starts to really take effect, is long-term. So if we're keeping our roads at an eighty, and doing the maintenance based on that one point five million a year, we're keeping our roads, and we're keeping up with the preventative maintenance on our roads. So right now, we have a backlog of seven million dollars in maintenance. Now that doesn't mean we could go spend seven million dollars and bring all of our roads to a hundred. That's based on, here's your backlog, keeping, keeping that, knowing that some of that backlog could be failure, but a lot of it is, if you do preventative maintenance in the next few years, that backlog is not gonna be an actual number.
Jay, just to clarify, this, this graph is based on our, on Cherry Hills Village specific numbers?
Yes.
This is not a generic, general graph like you showed earlier? This is specific to our situation?
So, keeping those at an eighty compared to a seventy, long-term, is where we gain. We, there, there is a cost savings over the long-term, because now we are not getting into worst-first that I talked about earlier, where a lot of cities, they go out, they have roads failing, they need money for some other project, so they start to take their road funds. And they, they, the first thing that happens is the maintenance program gets cut, because we've got roads that are failing, that we have to go and replace, the maintenance can wait. You defer that maintenance, it starts to build up, and at some point, you spin out of control, and you, you won't get caught up. I think it was four years ago now, City of Sheridan got into that, they actually went and got a twenty-five million dollar bond to repave almost every street in the city. But are they maintaining that?
But, so does, does that mean the seven-fifty number isn't really the number?
The, the number that we're using is one point five, is what we've put in the...
Well, I mean, for the, um, orange columns, for the seventy-three.
No, no, that's, that's the real number. You could still maintain your streets at that ride quality, but you're gonna start losing streets at some, you're going to have to start replacing streets instead of maintaining streets. And that's why that backlog goes up, to twenty-four million dollars. Because now, if you're not doing the preventative maintenance, you're gonna have to come in and do actual road replacement at some point.
Right, so the seven-fifty doesn't include the cost of the road replacement?
No.
Then, is it really maintaining them to a seventy?
It is, but at some point, you're gonna lose, you're gonna fall off the cliff. You can maintain them, and this goes out fifteen years, at some point, you're gonna start losing so many streets that you cannot maintain them with the seven-fifty, that you will only be able to repair your roads that have failed, and you won't have money to maintain your roads that are still in good shape.
Yeah, and I, I get that, I mean, that's clear, it's like, eventually, and if you look at those numbers, you can tell, right? I mean, sit there and go seven and seven, and then you go out ten years, and you go thirteen and eight, okay, that's eight million dollars of more deferred maintenance, you're only saving over ten years, if you did seven fifty, seven hundred, seven and a half million dollars, one year screws you. And it's basically saying it's gonna push you into replacing the whole, the whole road. Well, what if, you know, and I don't know, we sort of do chip seal once every three years or so, but...
Uh, well, we, we, if we mill and overlay, then we chip seal it four or five years, and then every seven years.
Okay, and that's...
Seven or eight years, depending.
And it's like, what if? So what if you, you know, just went every five years, and then every eight years, and you just pushed it out a little bit? You didn't go so far that you just pushed this all, that's...
Well, and, and technically, we do do that...
Has it been optimized, I think, is the question?
Yeah, and so technically, that's, that's with Ryan on the street, we're, we're optimizing that, because we have some streets that were chip sealing this year that have been nine or ten years. We're not just, because it hit seven years, we're gonna go out and do it.
I got you.
We go out on the road, we look at it, and say, okay, we're gonna hold off on this one, but we need to do this one. And, and again, if you look at the, let's go to, so for the last ten years, we budgeted five hundred thousand dollars a year, 'cause we were in a, in a spot where we didn't have to do hardly any mill and overlays. But now, like I showed you on, on our larger streets, we're getting some rutting, we have to go to that. But if you look at, at the, um, actual budget on the, on the lower line there, some of those years, we didn't hit the five hundred thousand, only because we were optimizing. It doesn't make sense for us if, you know, should, we have one street in this neighborhood that probably should use a chip seal, let's, we just go crack seal it at extra time, and wait till the whole neighborhood needs it. So, it's sometimes trying to say, okay, we have five hundred thousand, we gotta spend it all? No, we, we say, okay, this year, because of the way the streets we need to do, we're only gonna spend three hundred and fifty thousand, because we don't wanna spend the money just because we have it, we wanna optimize it, that's a good word.
And by the way, I think, just, at least it was, it was news to me, I think that was one of the benefits that we had when we put together the CIP program a couple of years ago, and drove it out, and, I mean, the questions came up, really, is this all we need to spend? It's like, well, no, we're gonna need to start doing some mill and overlay, oh, well, where's that? Let's get it in there. And you did that, and that gave us much more confidence with regard to what we're actually looking for in terms of capital improvements.
So I assume, you know, looking at this chart, if a resident is looking at this, and you see that we have, we're tripling what we have spent, and I assume that is because of the increased need for now mill and overlay as opposed to just chip sealing?
Yep. So we look at, at, a chip seal is about a dollar a unit, mill and overlay is about three dollars a unit, and complete replacement is eight to ten dollars a unit.
Trying to be sensitive to time, it is six twenty-nine. Are there other...
So that's all I have, actually, we can, if there's any quick questions, I...
Okay.
I recognize this is more of interest to some of us than others.
Okay. Well, we do have one minute, I think there are some residents who plan on attending, so I'll give them a minute to come in.
Hello, perfect timing, wow!
Chip seal. How are both of you? Just gave a speech. Drug policy. Including legislators and others at the Antioch Museum. She's followed by De'Kathy Bray, the head of the Public Health, liked her, heard what she said, but... I had prior... A number of our, uh, folks were there. Charlie McNeam, the Virginia...
Okay, it is, um, six thirty-three PM, and I will call the regular city council meeting to order. Oh, yes, use the gavel. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Heller?
Here.
Counselor Eber is absent, Counselor Holen?
Here.
Counselor McGuire?
Here.
Counselor Robinson?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, next up is audience participation, and this is for items not related to a public hearing on the agenda. Thank you, so there are, okay, there are three people signed up to speak about something that's not otherwise on the agenda. First up is Richard Abels, and after Mr. Abels will be Pasquale Riggi. Ri, it is Riggi, right? All right. Just as a reminder for everyone, this will be true when we get to our, um, public hearing as well. Audience participation, you're called in the order that you're signed up, there's a limit of five minutes per speaker. If someone is, has already said what you would like to say, feel free to just stand up and say, I agree with so-and-so, um, but you do have your time, your time cannot be ceded to another person. We expect that everyone maintains an orderly conduct and doesn't interfere with the function of the meeting. Um, and particularly, when we get to the public hearing testimony, your comments have to be related to that topic and that topic only. This is the part of the public input where you're welcome to speak about anything you like, and so, Mr. Abels, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, good evening, good evening, councilors. Back in November and December of last year, I and probably sixty or seventy or more of our neighbors came and listened to the, uh, application for the Brave Church to expand the Brave Academy bef, before five of you, maybe it was six, I can't remember who went on and who went off. One of the major takeaways of that discussion from several of the councilors was, well, traffic is bad, we know traffic is bad in Cherry Hills Village, and it's always sort of been bad, and we can't deny an application to increase to two hundred and twenty-five students from forty, because traffic is bad. We understood that, a lot of people weren't very happy with the outcome, it wasn't a question of the expansion, it was how traffic would be further negatively impacted during that time. I'm not here to talk about that, I'm here to talk about traffic in general, especially in northeast Cherry Hills Village. And a lot of also what we heard that night is that the semi-rural nature of the village creates challenges and yins and yangs of people that don't want easier traffic, and do want better traffic, and whatever it is, and I'm here to talk about those people who want things to be a little more efficient when it comes to the traffic management on the major corridors. So, semi-rural shouldn't be an excuse, or, or, or a reason, so to speak, for inconveniencing residents and ignoring safety issues. And there was major concern with that with the Brave Church. So what I wanna ask you tonight, both rhetorically as well as specifically, is what is being done on the existing traffic issues that you all say you are aware of? And I'll point a few of them out. The island on northbound Colorado at Hampton, just south, right next to the first Plymouth, there's an island that's lovely and tree and, and if there are more than four or five vehicles heading northbound, people cannot turn left to take advantage of the left turn arrow, and you end up with ten, or fifteen, or twenty cars waiting in line to either go north or to go west between three and six PM, pretty much every afternoon. Westbound Hampton, turning south onto Colorado Boulevard. Hope you don't have to do that, because the green arrow is three seconds long at pretty much every time of day. Three seconds, one, two, three, two cars. If you're lucky, you could get a third guy trying to, to go through. I know C.Dot, I know Denver, but it's us as well. The timing of the northbound Colorado light at Hampton, from three to six PM, maybe it's ten, maybe it's twelve seconds in the afternoon, we've been told that that's been increased to that amount of time, from, from less. But it creates, again, these giant backups of traffic. People speed through Greenwood, through Greenwood Village, that's later on the agenda, I'm not talking about that tonight. They speed through the village using Mansfield as a huge intermediary between point A and point B. And the residents that came out a few months ago were practically begging you for relief from the speed that happens, and the, the general consensus to this guy is, well, there's really, I mean, you can't, there, there's not much we can do, and I ain't gonna, I, they, they deserve better, 'cause it was to no avail. How long are you gonna wait before you address these underlying problems that will be further impacted by other things that happen in the village? A brave expansion, an expansion someplace else. Apartments going in off of Monaco that it might be cutting through the neighborhood to avoid the traffic. I've got one statistic for you that I wanna point out. When Brave expands to over two hundred students at any, uh, starting in the fall, it'll create approximately a hundred and twenty-five new vehicles, twice a day, four days a week, to drop off the expansion. to drop off the expected increase in new students. That is a thousand a week. I mean, I have to write this down. Hundred-and-twenty-five new vehicles twice a day, four days a week is a thousand new vehicles a week. And I'm just making up a forty-week school year. That's forty thousand new vehicles blocking an already self-admitted, lousy traffic system, and I'm hoping you will do something ahead of all of that so that it doesn't take a bad situation and make it worse. I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. I also did forget to mention, just in case anyone is not familiar, there is no, public comment is not a dialogue. It's not a back and forth. It's a, the public gets to make your comments and the council listens to that. So I appreciate, in case you're expecting a response. All right, Mr. Riggi? Oh, yes. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Pasquale Riggi. I'm at twenty-seven Covington Drive. Thanks for the opportunity. Just following up from what Dick said, you know, traffic is an issue. It's obvious to the people who live around Brave Academy that traffic now is a disaster, especially during peak periods. And literally dumping one-hundred more cars onto Colorado Boulevard from Brave Academy goes from very bad to ridiculously bad. So that's a pretty obvious thing. You know, the other part of this is this is the first time that I've had to come back to city council and express my displeasure for what happened in November and December of last year. We did come back on the December eleventh meeting, following the November nineteenth meeting, and we're not allowed to to speak about Brave, and I understand the rules. You know, and I'm going to thank you for what you do because it is a thankless task, but then I'm also going to hold you responsible. We appreciate that you're willing to do this, but you need to do better. And here's how you need to do better. On November nineteenth, when the Brave Academy expansion was first discussed, not first, but came up for approval, there were sixty-plus residents filling this room, a lot of them standing. And they were here to express their concerns of an order-of-magnitude expansion at Brave, from thirty students to two-hundred-plus. We knew, being residents here, that that would paralyze Colorado Boulevard based upon the entry-exit route that they proposed. Most of the people opposing what was going on were not opposing Brave's expansion. They were opposing dumping, literally dumping, these hundred cars more each day onto Colorado Boulevard. And we felt that there were alternatives. We hired a traffic engineer at our own cost to do an independent study. That traffic engineer had four, has forty years-plus experience. He was given three minutes to talk on the night of November nineteenth. Brave purchased a traffic study and got the result that they wanted. It was rubber-stamped by a purported expert from the city staff who has less than ten years' experience. It was obvious, go back and watch the video, it was obvious that he didn't know what he was talking about. And yet, the public and their concerns, as well as a traffic study, independent, third-party traffic study, was pretty much ignored. That's where you need to do better. We also hired, when I say "we," same group of concerned citizens, hired Brownstein et al. to demonstrate to the council that they were misapplying the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, our LUPA. And in fact, the way they were treating Brave and our LUPA was giving Brave Academy special treatment. You guys will recall on November nineteenth that you went into closed session to discuss that. You again gave our lawyer three minutes to discuss not only that, but how our firm thought that the application of our LUPA and the expansion of Brave, the way it was proposed, would cause more traffic, harmful traffic and safety concerns. So I understand that there are physical limitations, time limitations, when so many residents arrive to discuss a particular issue, but that really should be your cue. It's like, okay, this isn't going to be approved tonight. Because we, you know, there's this swarm of people who have concerns. So I ask you to do better in the future. We did, I want to recognize Councilman Eber, right, because he repeatedly attempted to propose a facilitated discussion with Brave with concerned community members, but that was not granted by the rest of the council members. So please listen to your community. We're going to come back and hold you accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Karen, is it Ogaard? And again, just please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name, ooh, that sounded loud. Hello, my name is Karen Ogaard. I reside at twenty-seven Covington Drive. I agree, obviously, with what Dick and Pasquale have mentioned so far, but your constituents in Covington, Mansfield, and the surrounding neighborhoods have talked about, expressed their concerns back in November and in December about the traffic problems and the potential safety concerns that might arise from all the traffic that is continuing to grow in our neighborhood. This issue remains unsolved and our concerns have not changed. What may have changed is that we don't have sixty of your residents and your constituents here tonight. But they are still very concerned, and they, quite honestly, they feel underrepresented. And that's what I want to make sure I put on the record for today. We want to know a couple things. One is, well, most importantly, is that what you will do, and I know you can answer this question to me directly, but we want to know what you're going to do to engage us and as your neighbors and as your constituents in the conversation to find solutions that were going to be considered regarding the traffic, especially since it sounds like there's going to be a lot more activity if Brave gets their, not Brave, excuse me, but if Kent is going to be doing their wellness center. So something other than what Brave might be feeding you as far as information. We want you to reach out to the community and somehow engage us in the conversations going forward. We'd love to know how that's going to happen. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is reports from members of city boards and commissions. Is there anyone? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda, which is quite lengthy tonight. Is there anything to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none?
Move approval of consent agenda items eight, six A through G.
That has been moved and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. There are no items removed from the consent agenda. Moving on to new business. The first item is a public hearing for Resolution thirteen, series twenty-two-five, approving a site plan for renovations to and the expansion of the Fitness and Wellness Center for Kent Denver School located at four-thousand East Quincy Avenue. This will be a public hearing. The first, before we begin, I need to ask any council members if there are conflicts of interest that anyone wishes to disclose. Seeing none, I will officially open the public hearing at six forty-nine PM and turn the presentation over to Director Workman.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of city council. As was just stated, the next item on your agenda is Resolution thirteen, series twenty-two-five. It's a request by Kent Denver School in order to have a site plan amendment approved for expansions to and renovations of their Fitness and Wellness Center. Please note that the applicant has provided the necessary affidavits verifying that all public notification requirements have been met. The building that's the subject of this application is located interior to the site. The athletic fields are located to the north. The tennis courts are located to the south of this site. Property is Zoned R1. It's been used for school purposes since the nineteen-sixties. And over the, over time, the site has been constructed and reconstructed. The last building expansion occurred back in twenty-eighteen, which was an expansion to the upper school facility. And if you were on council at that time, you remember that application well. In the applicant's words, as part of their request, "This project is for the exclusive use of Kent Denver School, students, faculty, and their staff. Student enrollment is not projected to increase as a result of the proposed project. This project is necessary in order to provide upgrades to their fitness and wellness facility, as well as upgraded locker rooms, which are now forty years old." In support of their application, Kent Denver did provide a letter from a traffic engineer that said that the facility is intended solely for their students, faculty, and staff. No additional trips are expected to be generated by the school, and this improvement will have no adverse impact on traffic operations. Another document that was submitted by the applicant in support of their application was a site plan document. That's the larger eleven-by-seventeen document that I believe you have on your dais this evening. It was also in your packet. The red box on this screen is the existing structure that will remain. The blue sort of polygon there is the addition to the facility. In addition to the increased building size, they are doing a reconfiguration of the parking area, adding six parking spaces, which are required by the increased amount of building square footage. The amended and rest, back in twenty-eighteen, when the, when the upper school application was approved, just like you've seen in other applications, there's a development agreement that was associated with that. Back in twenty-eighteen, the council at that time granted a total of eight-hundred-and-six parking spaces on the subject property. These additional six would bring that total to eight-hundred-and-twelve, which has been reflected in the development agreement that is proposed as part of this application. An additional note at this time, just because it makes a little more sense because of the site plan visual on the screen in front of you. There are two recommended conditions for approval of this application. The first recommended condition is related to the relocation of some water easements for Denver Water infrastructure. The applicant's currently in the process of receiving approval from Denver Water. While that process can be lengthy due to the Denver Water process, there's no reason to believe that the applicant and Denver Water will not reach an agreement. The second recommended condition is related to the relocation of a couple of fire hydrants. The ultimate location of those fire hydrants is dependent on the location of the Denver Water lines in order to be able to service those fire hydrants. As a reminder, there are six specific approval criteria we as staff use when we evaluate these applications. Make our recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission. These are the six conditions, not conditions, but the six approval criteria that the Planning and Zoning Commission uses to evaluate the project and make their recommendation to you, and the six approval criteria that you're bound to use in order to approve, approve with conditions or deny the request. The first approval criteria is that it is consistent with or further implements the goals and strategies of the master plan. Subject property is identified for institutional uses on the city's future land use map. The description for the uses in that designation include, "The uses in this category include government, religious, and educational properties. The request before the council tonight is for renovations, and in addition to a school facility, the requested use is consistent with the future land use map." As noted earlier in the presentation, the site has historically been used as a school. Therefore, the requested improvements to an existing school are consistent with the vision statement that it is the desire of the citizens of Cherry Hills Village to maintain and enhance the established character of the community. The established character for this area is that of a school. Finally, in this goal, LU one B of the master plan states, "Maintain the existing land uses on property owned by private clubs, private and public schools, and institutions in the city." As was just noted, the site has historically functioned as a school. This criteria has been met. The second approval criteria is that the proposed development complies with all applicable city ordinances and is consistent with all other city policies and plans. The site plan has been reviewed and determined to meet the zoning requirements. During the referral process, the city's building consultant in South Metro Fire Rescue District indicated that the applicant does or will be able to meet the applicable code requirements as part of a permit process, and that, subject to the two recommended conditions, the application will meet the requirements of the city referral partners. There's no known inconsistencies with other city policies or plans. This criteria has been met. The third is that the bulk and scale of any of the proposed buildings or structures or expansions there too is consistent with the context of the site and does not materially change the physical character or function of the surrounding area. The proposed changes, in addition, are consistent with the existing architectural style on-site. The changes represent an increase to the functionality of the building and modernization of the interior and exterior of the structure. The physical character and function of the property, that of a private school, is not changing as part of this request. This criteria has been met. Fourth approval criteria relates to drainage systems and how they're designed and utilized. The increases to the total impervious area have been reviewed by the city's civil engineering consultant, Icon Engineering, and recommended for approval. This criteria has been met. "The proposed development will not result in unreasonable traffic congestion or create safety hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic, and adequate provisions will be provided to manage any traffic-related issues." The scope of the application does not propose to increase enrollment, does not propose to increase the frequency or duration of any of their events or activities. All of those previously agreed-to terms through the previous development agreements remain the same. There's no change to any of that. There has been a traffic letter that's been provided indicating that there will not be an increase in traffic as a result of this request. There are significant traffic mitigation measures that exist in the current development agreement from twenty-eighteen that the city and the applicant have agreed to historically. Again, those remain in place. So think of, right, the traffic control officer in the morning or any of those other kinds of traffic mitig, all of those remain in place. None of those have changed. However, there are two additional items that staff proposed and the applicant has agreed to related to traffic and potential traffic impacts. For those of you that have been on council, these two additions will look familiar to you. And we'll get into this in a little more detail in a couple slides, but there is a provision in this version of the development agreement that Kent is required to make reasonable efforts to coordinate start and release times with, excuse me, Brave Academy to manage traffic congestion. Pardon me. If the city determines that Kent traffic causes material adverse impacts on city streets or public rights away, Kent agrees to participate in discussions about improving traffic congestion as required by the community development director. Finally, the request to modernize and enlarge the structure has no apparent correlation with an increased risk for safety concerns. This criteria has been met. The sixth and final approval criteria is that construction will be timed and staged to minimize impacts on adjacent residential properties, including but not limited to lighting, visual impacts, vibration, and noise. For the benefit of council, construction is anticipated to start in spring of twenty-five and run through the spring of twenty-six. Due to the interior location of the structure in relation to the property lines, there will be minimal impact to adjacent residential properties. However, the applicant has submitted a construction staging plan that meets the city's requirements as part of their building permit process. And I do want to highlight for council that is part of that. The west access, so the access closest to Monroe Street, is the primary construction access point during the school year. And during the summer break, it will be a mix of the west access and the east access. Finally, the applicant has indicated that they will abide by the city's construction hours as required by our code. So again, the city and Kent have a long history of development agreements, the most recent being from the twenty-eighteen application. Again, the majority of that is not changing. Anything related to traffic management plans, their limitations on events, their general public notice, their student enrollment, none of that is changing. Some of the language may have been updated to reference current sections of code and to create clarity, things like that, but none of the requirements in place have changed. However, there are those two new additional conditions that the applicant did agree to, which is coordinating their start and release times with Kent, with, excuse me, with Brave Academy, and letting us as the city staff know ten business days before that change becomes effective. And again, they have agreed to participate in discussions related to school traffic and school traffic impact. and school traffic impacts if they are having a material adverse impact on public right away. On February 11th of this year, the commission held a public hearing to discuss this request. The commission asked some questions about the facility being open to the public and how the increased building size would impact any programming they might have. The applicant responded that the building is intended to be used by the Kent Denver students and their faculty, and since the new square footage is primarily locker rooms and weight rooms, there's not an additional increase in capacity that would allow them to increase capacity for programming. After that, at the conclusion of that public hearing, the commission voted unanimously to recommend that city council approve the request, subject to the two recommended As a part of this application, staff has received a number of, of emails regarding the application. I'm sure that comes as no surprise. But as of 3:30 this afternoon, I'd received 83 emails. There were three on your dais, those I received between the publication of the packet and today. All the other correspondence were included as part of your packet. There is one email in there that did not express support or opposition, but rather had some questions about potential impacts to traffic. There was a second email in there asking about landscape screening for the addition. Again, not necessarily expressing support or opposition, just wanting to put that sort of issue on, on council's radar. All of the other emails that I received were in support of the application, generally commending the applicant for recognizing the need for these improvements and, and moving forward with them. With that, that concludes staff's presentation. The recommended motion is on the screen in front of you. I'm happy to take any questions you may have. The applicant is also available and intends to provide a presentation and then answer any questions you may have for them.
Thank you. So the next step in this process is council questions specifically for staff, and then after that, the applicant will have an opportunity to present and will have opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. But right now, if there are any questions for staff?
Got a question.
Yes, Councilor Holland.
And actually, I've only got one, which is surprising for me. And I think that's because of the thoroughness of the applicant's application, but in particular, I want to compliment staff, and in particular, and I'd like you to pass along to Planning and Zoning. I don't know that I've ever seen a more thorough vetting of a thing by Planning and Zoning than that. I mean, they covered everything from sleep to nuts, which is one of the reasons I don't have any questions. I, I, I mean, I was really, really impressed, and please pass on.
Absolutely, I will pass that feedback along to Planning and Zoning Commission. That's good feedback for them.
But I would like, if you could, because we did get that additional one on screening, and I guess you could say that's, could be part of criteria three, which is the surrounding area, et cetera, and this is a very impressive structure, big investment by Kent, et cetera, a very worthwhile project, it seems to me, and it seems that the neighbors, who I know Kent wants to be good neighbors with, would be interested in continuing to be good neighbors, and so maybe there could be some addressing, if not by you, than by the applicant in terms of addressing what doesn't seem to be an unreasonable request by the neighbors to their east.
I think that's a very reasonable question. I know the applicant has some detail that they will get into, but from, from sort of the city perspective or the review, or perspective, it's sort of blocked by the red circle on the screen in front of you, but there are a fair number of mature trees located just east of the structure. Now, admittedly, they probably don't go as far north as the structure will, but those trees do provide some existing screening. In terms of, you know, staff's ability to enforce such a requirement, we don't have a landscape screening requirement in our code, so that would make it difficult for us. Obviously, the applicant would have to agree to that, but the applicant, I know in their presentation, has some visuals of what you can see sort of superimposed on, on what would be proposed.
Along that same line, I know we have a tree replacement ordinance for residential development. Is there any things, does that apply here? Is there anything similar?
No, the tree mitigation ordinance that you're referencing applies only to single-family homes.
Okay. And then I also had a question in your presentation. You mentioned the existing traffic mitigation measures. To my knowledge, it's really only just the, the traffic control officer. Is there any other traffic control mitigation or traffic mitigation that you were referring to?
I'm making sure that.
Okay.
Making sure that I thoroughly answer your question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I was, I was referring in my mind to the limitation on the parking as well, and the fact that, right, and per the agreement, Kent's responsible for making sure that they have enough parking on-site if they have more than one event, and so I was, I guess I was sort of lumping traffic mitigation with parking mitigation as well, just because of the number of trips that would be coming to and from the site.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
I have one question that relates to the development agreement. This may be more for council. So my understanding is this supersedes and replaces the prior development agreements. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That is correct, as did the upper school one, but it was not labeled as such, and so I tried to make that a little more of a prominent feature.
So, and I realize this is not the issue being discussed tonight, but I believe last year, a resident sent us a prior agreement in which there were certain commitments that Kent made when the stadium was put in relating to lighting. How are those commitments affected by this agreement? I, I just don't want to change that status. I know this is an issue that's going to be coming up, and I, I just want things to be the same after the, after this agreement as before.
Understood.
Does that make sense?
So there's a restriction on the use of stadium facility?
On lighting?
Yes. Well, look, just give me a second here. Well, no, that, that's on leasing, and then the exterior lighting on the property must comply with all applicable provisions of the city code now.
But that's not what that other development agreement said.
The question that I'm asking is, there was a commitment by Kent not to put in stadium lighting, and I, I understand that may change, but I also understand that neighbors relied on that, and it's going to become an issue, and I just want to make sure that whatever the status quo is, isn't changed by the execution of this agreement.
Give me a minute, please, and I'll take a deeper look.
Okay.
The concern being that if there were certain additional steps that were in the previous agreement that Kent was, for lack of a better term, on the hook for, that those remain in this.
Those just remain in place.
Yes.
Not that we change, just that they remain in place.
Yes, so you're not looking to add or address.
Certainly change things that, right.
You just want to make sure that it carries forward.
Yeah, I don't know if on the hook is the right word. And the point is that whatever conditions were in the previous agreement that have nothing to do with this health center shouldn't, should be back into this agreement. If there are conditions in the previous agreement that have nothing to do with the change associated with this health center.
Agreed.
They should, they should follow.
Agreed.
Consular McGuire's point. I agree with that.
That's my, that was my only question.
Okay, so while council researches that, we will move on to the applicant presentation. Welcome, and please just state your name and address for the record and.
Just wanted to call a call.
Oh.
Good evening. I'm David Brammer, head of school at Kent Denver. I am a resident of the school, basically, 4090 East Quincy Avenue here in Cherry Hills Village. Appreciate you having us on the agenda tonight, and, you know, I'm pretty excited about what we have to present. And the site plan that we are proposing is driven really by two major goals. The first is to ensure that we have a facility that best meets the health, wellness, and fitness needs of our students, faculty, and staff. And the second is to accomplish this in a manner that has the most limited impact on the campus and the broader community. In terms of the first point, an overhaul of the athletic center has been an identified need for years, given what we know as best practices when it comes to meeting the health and wellness needs of our students. This project has been a long time coming. As for the second point, we value the campus, its beauty, the importance of sightlines for our neighbors, and the resource our campus provides Cherry Hills Village. Please know that this sentiment has guided our planning, and let me be clear that our plan in no way facilitates an increase in our student enrollment, will not extend the school's hours of operation, or otherwise increase the number of people coming to our campus, whether during the school year or through our summer programs. Needless to say, we were encouraged by how our plans and the spirit in which we've approached this project were received by the Planning and Zoning Committee, who unanimously voted in support of this proposal, and it is our hope that you will similarly approve this project. But to get more into the specifics, I would like to turn it over to Brian Schmidt, our architect from Simple Brown, who's been part of a number of projects on our campus, to go over the specifics of this proposal, and please know that he, Jerry Walker, our associate head for finance and operations, and I are here available to answer any questions that you might have after that. So if I may.
Thank you, please do.
Yep.
And welcome.
Paul, are we good tonight?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Brian Schmidt. I'm an architect with Simple Brown Design, and I live at 7823 East Eighth Place in Denver, and very happy to be here, happy to be presenting to you, mayor, and council members. Want to show you some maybe prettier pictures than what is in the relatively dry package you have, and talk to you a little bit more in detail about what the nature of the project is. So on the screen in front of you, you see the existing conditions, and I'm going to bring out a laser pointer that none of you are going to be able to see because it's behind you. Oh, and that's pointless, anyway. Okay, so we'll forget about that, but the red that you see is the existing portion of the locker rooms and weight room that is going to be torn down. Reaching around, you can see at the upper left is the baseball field, there's the parking lot, just north of the demolished portion of the school, which is where the vast majority of the parking is when people attend events at Yates or Black Field House, and then DSO, of course, is to the northeast, and then tennis courts to the south. So that's the basic orientation of where things are. But one of the things I want to point out is that accessibility on this project, as it currently stands, with the existing locker rooms, is lousy. If you look, the accessible parking spaces are currently located at the southeast corner of Yates Pavilion, and you have to go around the building, kind of the backside entrance of Yates, to find an accessible entrance. That's not acceptable to us moving forward. And in the spirit of trying to minimize the height and the mass of this building, one of the things that we are doing is with the new construction, pushing what is right now, all that red, which is five feet above the gym floor levels, the new construction is going to all be down at the lower floor level, at that gym floor level. So it's all going to be accessible from all sides. David mentioned the state of the current locker rooms, which are 40 years old. They have group showers, things that are just not appropriate in this day and age. So programmatically, one of the things that we're doing is planning on providing appropriate shower and restroom facilities and just making them bigger and more appropriate for the use of the students. Go to the next slide, Paul, thank you. So this takes what you saw on the prior page, that red block of space, and shows you how it sits relative to the new footprint of the building. And so what we have is about 15,300 square feet of demolition in red. The new footprint, which you see in white and highlighted by the green there, is 23,300. And so the footprint itself is only 8,000 square foot bigger, so not a whole lot bigger. And by virtue of pushing that lower floor down by five feet, we can actually put a second floor on top of it and have it still be lower by quite a lot than the existing Yates Pavilion and Black Field House. The total building between the lower floor and the upper floor is about 37,000 square feet. And one of the other things we're doing with the site, as Paul mentioned, is back to the accessibility. You can see little gray or little white dots on the parking lot, so we are reconfiguring the parking lot and bringing accessible parking much more proximate to the new main entrance of the building. So we're not going to force people to walk around the backside to come in. Go to the next slide, Paul, thank you. So one of the things that you can see in looking at the elevations, number one, is that we are trying to materially tie this building to the rest of the campus, so that it all continues that campus feel, so we have copper and brick and dark bronze storefront glazing. The other thing that you can see, particularly on the top elevation, is the way that the mass of the building follows the slope of the grade on the north side of the building. So as you are approaching the building from the DSO parking lot, that's the view that you're going to have, that one on the top. And what that also shows is that the lower floor, by virtue of the grading, is largely buried. So the perceived mass of the building is going to be quite a lot reduced relative to the height of the building, the actual height of the building. So despite the fact that it's two stories, it really only feels like a tall one-story building. Go to the next one then. So this is looking at the, the top view is looking at the south side of the building, right where the tennis courts are, and one of the facts of the matter is that the existing Black Field House is not the most aesthetically pleasing buildings on campus. So we are with the materials and the extension of the materials across campus, going to provide a screen wall that will hide Black Field House. You can see it just peeking up at the top in that upper elevation there, but also screening some mechanical that we have. So the new mechanical systems that we're utilizing for this building will be screened both visually and from an auditory perception. So let's go to the next slide. So one of the things that we want to show you is, this is the northeast corner of the building, and this is a reflection of how that lower floor level is really buried, and the peak of that prow that you see at the top of the screen is really only about 20 feet above grade. So again, just really the massing of a tall, single-story building. And here you can see better than on the elevations, the use of copper and brick to tie it all into the rest of the campus. Next page. And here is an aerial view, and on the far right, you can see the existing Yates Pavilion, which we are cladding the north and south sides with copper, but the real point of this image is to show you that what we are proposing with the new construction, even though it's two stories tall again, is still lower than both Yates Pavilion and the height of the existing Black Field House, which are going to remain. And you can see the slope of that roof and how it works with the sidewalk that you see going up on the west, or the left side of the page. Next slide. And then again, pointing out the, the emphasis here on accessibility. So this is the new main entrance. It's a grand entrance, not that you really get to vote on this, but just inside this grand entrance, we have a space that we're calling the Hall of Champions. So we all really are trying to do it right. It's going to celebrate the achievements, including the recent boys' state basketball So that's the type of experience that we're trying to promote here. The next page. And this then is the southeast entrance, where most of the kids will actually arrive as they're coming from the campus to the east. One of the things that we want to touch on is that I've mentioned that we're going five feet down. Pushing five feet down, while it's great from an accessibility perspective, has actually been done at great cost and difficulty for Kent, because we are just off to the left-hand side of the page, off of a wetlands area. And so we're going to be wet, and as a consequence, one of the things that we are doing is providing a structural floor slab with full perimeter drain, sump pumps and pits, so that we can pump all of that water that we're expecting from below our lower floor slab out into the wetlands. And that's not a cheap measure, but that's really important to Kent insofar as maintaining that accessibility and pushing the mass of the building down. that accessibility and pushing the mass of the building down. And then lastly, we do have some photos from the perimeter of the site that start to address some of the questions, one of which was in a letter that you received today. And so for that particular letter, that particular resident lives at basically number three there. And so you can see that's due east of where the site is. You can see the site just north of the tennis courts. And one of the things I wanna point out is, between the three itself and our site, the number of trees that exist. And you really can't, and if you look really closely, maybe you can see just a hint of the building there, the existing building. Similarly, from two, which is just north, there's next to no visibility, and you can see the respective distances from those two views. So we're over 1,000 feet from the building to those respective points. And then as we move around, you can see what you don't see, I would say, from other vantage points around the site. So maybe Paul, go to the last slide. Please.
That should be it.
Yep, okay. So there you can see a, a view from Quincy, and then we went all the way over on the west side of the site. And the beauty of this is that, as was mentioned earlier, this is an interior site project, and there is a pretty significant perimeter of trees that will mitigate any views in, from the perimeter of the site. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about planning, design.
Questions for the applicant in general, either the architect or the applicant?
While we're on the subject of trees, it did look, as you said, your prettier pictures, it did look like there were some new trees. Are we to assume that those are part of the plan, or are they just added by the computer?
Yes, yes, absolutely, there are. Yep, and we are, it's difficult, maybe, Paul, if you go back to the very first page, that might-
Like right there, yeah, there-
-show us some context.
A bunch of these had trees.
So there are some existing trees that you can see off to the right of the existing building, which is gonna be demolished, and we're gonna work very hard to retain those. The only one or two that we're going to lose of the existing trees are just to the northeast of the building, where the new building footprint encroaches on them, and they just, they wouldn't survive.
Okay.
But we are certainly planning on putting many more in.
Okay, thank you. And then I have another question, just sort of in general, I'm wondering whether the delay, which I understand is not your fault, so thank you for working with our schedule, is, do you have any concerns about your budget, or, you know, increased costs or anything with the two, two and a half month sort of delay?
Is that, you wanna take that? I'll pass you. Okay.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Jerry Walker, I'm the Associate Head of School at Kent Denver. And I wanted to jump up, thank you, Brian, that was great. I wanna jump and talk a little bit about the trees. I know that, Madam Mayor, you had asked about the policy about tree replacement. The school has a policy that when we remove a tree, we plant at least two in its place. And that will be carried forward with this project. And you saw in the landscape architect planning there, that there are additional trees. So the trees that we are removing, that are in that red demolition area, they will be replaced by at least two. In fact, I think the number is closer to three to one on new tree plantings with this. And as far as the delay, you know, we, we're a school, and we wanted to get some things done over spring break, maximizing our spring break and our summer vacation. But we're working, you know, diligently to try and get as much of this done within those vacation periods as possible, especially the demolition, right? Especially some of that big earthwork and demolition. We wanna get some of that done over the summer, and to do that, we need to get started on some things as soon as possible. As far as budget, right now, our general contractor's here. I think he's gonna guarantee my GMP tonight. Is that right, Craig? No, so we, we don't have concerns at this point with that, but thank you.
Council Robinson.
Yes, can you come back up? Can you just point out during construction, where are the construction vehicles gonna be accessing the site, and what do you expect there?
Yep, Paul, can you go to, let's see, maybe one of the photos at the end that show this whole site plan?
Right there.
So there are a couple of different access points. So the one is on Ren, or near Renham Road, at the northwest corner. That's gonna be the primary source of construction traffic, or primary route for construction traffic.
So past the ball field and then into the site?
Yes, so they kinda come back, there's a little road that goes along the west side of the, the ball fields-
Yep.
-along there. Now during the summer, that's going to be used as a pickup-dropoff, so just kind of one big continuous pickup-dropoff lane, because Kent does have camps in the summer, and that's where they're gonna be doing pickup and dropoff. So during the summer, they're gonna manage when those pickup and dropoff times happen, and use either that west entrance or the primary entrance a little bit further to the east. But that'll be all highly coordinated and scheduled.
Yeah, I would just add to that, that, once again, with the school vacation schedule, that primary entrance to campus will be utilized during the summer as much as we can, because that's gonna be a little bit easier to bring in some of the heavy equipment. And so the much, as much as we can get done during the, the months of June, July, and August, bringing crane, cement, et cetera, we're gonna try and use primarily the main entrance for that. Once the school year starts, of course, that becomes less preferable to us, but there may be occasions, especially I'm thinking around a crane, where we may have to use the main entrance. And we'll be scheduling that with our contractor, so that it doesn't impact our dropoff times, right? Because the last thing we want as a school is, is a crane showing up at, you know, 8:20 in the morning with the traffic control. So we'll work very hard to make sure that when some of that big equipment arrives and we need to use that main entrance, it'll happen during times when we're not doing dropoffs or pickups.
Great. And is my understanding that you'll begin as soon as the classes end, is that right? That's the, the hope?
Actually, we'd like to begin as soon as possible. We're, we've, we've started mobilizing. There's going to be a significant amount of time. We've had to move equipment out of the building, so movers coming in. There's some interior demolition that needs to happen, cutting off of electricity, removal of light fixtures, et cetera. And so we'll begin those things during the school year. And we'll also start work during the school year on some of the Denver Water Easement work, some of the South Metro Fire Line work, some of that repositioning of the fire hydrants where we can, and some of the demolition of the exterior structure. So some of that will be taking place between now and the end of school. And then during the summer, some of that other heavy lifting that has to happen, actually the removal of a lot of dirt and other materials, and bringing in some of the new concrete and steel will happen.
And I might add that we've submitted two separate permit packages. The first of which was a demolition site utility infrastructure grading permit, which we are chomping at the bit to receive, so that we can begin that work. And then there's a second permit for the construction of the new building itself that was submitted after the fact, with the intention of that demolition scope of work taking a certain amount of time while the new building permitting was being reviewed.
So just a final question from me, and it's really for Jay and Paul. Is there any concern about damage to Quincy through the construction process, or with the weight of the cranes and, and material coming in and so on?
I'll say, from the community development perspective, they will have to get a right-of-way permit, what that looks like and how that mitigation measures may be. I'll leave that to Director Goldie, but they will be required to get a right-of-way permit.
Yeah, there are no concerns. Those permits cover that. All of their construction equipment will obviously be within the weight limits, and so we monitor that during the whole process. And if there is any damage, we work with the property owner long before the close of the project. But I don't anticipate any issues at this point.
While you're, while you're on that, and back to our study session, I can't remember now, did you say that Quincy was scheduled for mill overlay this year?
No, Quincy, tentatively on schedule for next year.
Next year, okay.
Yep, not this year.
So it won't have an impact.
Council McQuire. I wanna compliment you. I think this looks like a beautiful project, and your community must be very excited about it. I don't have any questions. I agree with Council Holland. This was a really well-prepared presentation and application, so thank you for that. Council Holland.
Yeah, just one more, and, and I applaud the way you sunk that down. And based on the pictures that you showed, it looks to me like that, where the roof extends a little bit will not interfere at all with the views for the neighbors, or as well from the jewel of Cherry Hills Village, which is Quincy Farms. Just pointing it out. It looks to me like it'll be perfectly, perfectly fine, and is that a fair representation?
That's a very fair representation. Thank you.
We appreciate, we appreciate the effort there.
I just would love a chance to respond to a question from you, Earl. I just-
Oh, come on now, call me something.
You've only had one, and that's it for me tonight. I, I, I'm telling you, you guys, you guys worked over planning and zoning, that was the most thorough discussion I've ever seen from my hats or off to you. Well, thanks for you, Earl, that means a lot.
And as always, to, to my former colleague, Dave Wyman, who is just amazing in terms of his thoroughness.
Council Heller.
Yeah, same sentiment. Completely agree. A very complete package, beautiful facility. I really don't have any questions as a result. And you are in, in my district, so.
So I guess that just, I just have one quick question. With the slide that's up on the screen, what are, what are these white things next to number, just to the right of number five? What is that?
I, I, I think you're looking at the roof of school buses.
Oh, okay.
And so our buses are parked down by the, by the maintenance area there. Those are small buses, and most of those have a white roof.
Okay.
So I think the satellite, you're capturing some of that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so no other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much for that presentation.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, sorry, go ahead. Before we go into the next phase, just, we've been attempting to do thoughtful, dutiful research regarding the question you had. As we continue to do that, staff's not aware of the email, and we wanna make sure that we're answering the question as asked. The, the email from the resident, first of all, I guess if anybody has a copy of that and you wanna forward that to us, that would be great, just so we could see what it says. But if no one has that email, what did it specifically address?
Well, and I know that I, I don't, I mean, I obviously don't have a copy of it here. I do have it, I see Mr. Walker's prepared. But basically, when the stadium was constructed, there were several agreements made in that agreement. One was that there would never be lights at the stadium. Another was that, I believe, certain grades wouldn't be allowed to drive. A year later, that provision was removed, and I know you were there at the time, so I'll defer to you, Mr. Walker, to provide the detail.
Yeah, if you may, I'm, thank you. I, I can, I, I think I noted that clause which we're referring. And we did agree, when the stadium was built, not to put in outdoor lighting for that, and that's what that, that email was referencing, from Mr. Shermer, who's a nearby neighbor of us. Nothing in this, and the city attorney can, you know, opine on this as well, we've captured everything from the previous agreements, so that they are captured in this new agreement. So that would not change our ability, for example, to add stadium lighting because of this new agreement. Though that, that is still in effect. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't-
Sorry, Mr. Walker, could you just repeat that part? I missed part of what you were just saying.
Yes, so my understanding of the compilation of all the previous agreements into this new development agreement doesn't super, well, it supersedes them, but it doesn't remove any of those restrictions, unless they were removed in a previous agreement. You referenced sophomore driving. At one point, sophomore driving was prohibited, that was later removed in the next agreement, which is also in here. So the stadium lighting requirement that we not add that is still in effect with this new community development agreement.
And your position is that you're still in agreement with that provision being-
We are at this time. That doesn't, we reserve the right, obviously, to maybe petition the council at a future date-
Of course.
-about outdoor lighting, but that's not up for debate in this. We're, we're not seeking to change that status with this agreement. And one other clarification from, or basically, traffic mitigation measures that were stipulated in earlier agreements. Remember, Mr. Workman issued the requirement for uniform traffic control in the mornings, that's one. The other is, in these agreements, there is some requirements on our, if we're having multiple events that could exceed our parking capacity, and therefore increase traffic, that we have to limit those, and we would have to notify the community. So there are some other agreements that we have made in the past that still hold in this new agreement.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And I think, and I appreciate, appreciate, Mr. Walker, your commitment to that recommitment, but my, my question would be for the city attorney, and I'd want confirmation of that, that, because I thought I heard you say that it supersedes. It supersedes, that's not an accurate statement. If it supplements from a legal significance perspective, and it would, and I'm gonna be looking to hear you say that.
Those are distinctions of significance, and I'm completing my research and analysis right now.
Ah, okay.
So my, my recommendation-
Thank you.
... is that we hear from the residents, allowing us to continue to make sure that we give the most thorough answer possible.
Okay.
Just one point on that, could we not just modify the motion to acknowledge that anything unrelated to the actual site plan that was agreed to with the school is being maintained as a result of the action we're taking tonight?
That would not be my recommendation. I, I think, you know, putting things together in the agreement and being very clear on some points that are clearly of importance to the citizens and council is a good idea.
Okay, so while you continue to research that, we will move on to the public testimony portion of the evening. And again, if you didn't have an opportunity to sign up when you came in, please do so now. Anyone need to sign up? Okay, seeing none, I will call you in the order that you're signed up. And again, as a reminder, you'll have five minutes. If you just wanna agree with something that's already been said, feel free to say, "I agree." When you come up, state your name and address for the record. And the first person, and I apologize if I don't pronounce your name correctly, is maybe Sheila Olson Walker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I am Sheila, and I live at 4701 South Dasa Drive. I'm a mom, a Kent student, previously two other Kent students, and I'm a trustee as well. I don't really have much to add, other than what has been said, aside from, if we think about the, the locker rooms in particular, it's been 40 years since we updated. I'm a developmental scientist, and the, you know, developmental appropriateness of the locker rooms for the students, particularly the middle school students, is having their separate spaces and so forth, is incredibly important. But we are, we are long overdue for an upgrade. You know, it doesn't impede any of the views, the traffic, we've been very thoughtful about. One other thing that we've done to try to mitigate traffic is go through a massive schedule, like putting together a, a very complicated, ultra-complicated Rubik's Cube of scheduling to, to make sure that, you know, we mix up the schedule a bit to alleviate some of the traffic. I've experienced the traffic that other community members have talked about, and it's, it's, you know, it's an issue. So, but, you know, more than anything else, I think that we all, you know, as a school community, feel incredibly grateful to have a school on the incredible, incredibly beautiful open space and nature space that, that Kent is lucky to, to be on, and both from a health and learning and wellness standpoint for the whole community, for our students, for the, for the faculty. You know, we have, we absolutely are committed to continuing to be a, a resource to the community and an asset for the community to use, and to, to live and play, and, and, you know, walk their dogs and run around it. It really is an extraordinary place. So I'm very, you know, grateful to our leadership team and architecture firm. It's been a very thoughtful and very deliberate, intentional, detailed process that, that we've gone through. And I just thank you all for being so gracious to hear us out, and, and for your time, so. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Gina Fenton. And then after Gina will be Jennifer Waters, if you want to.
Good evening, and thank you so much for allowing us to come and talk. As some of you know, I-
I'm sorry, would you state your address?
Oh, sorry, it's, yes, Gina Carboni Fenton at 23 Covington Drive. And living in Covington, I have appeared before this council. Some of you are new. But I am terribly concerned with increased traffic in the village and maintaining our semi-rural nature in the community. So, and I frankly concur with my neighbors who spoke at the very beginning. But I am here to talk about the Kent issue. And as a resident who lives on Covington, clearly, I'm very aware of the intersections of Colorado and Quincy and what will happen. So, when I first heard that Kent was doing this, I was curious about whether or not this would affect the flow of traffic or congestion, particularly in Colorado. But as we've learned, this project is definitely not going to increase the traffic in Cherry Hills, and rather, it will update and improve these, the athletic facility. And these locker rooms, that I hear, are just in desperate need of a facelift. So, as we've seen from the other buildings that Kent has produced, they set a very high bar for top-notch construction and environmentally sound buildings. So, I'm sure they will do this with this new project as well. In all my years of living here in the village, Kent has really proven to be a good neighbor. I'd like to emphasize. They've hosted some terrific lectures, they've opened up to the community, they, as Sheila said, allow neighbors to walk freely on their trails in open spaces. And from what I understand, this new facility will not only enrich the health and well-being of existing students, teachers, and alumni, but also those students from low-income families that participate in Kent's existing program of Breakthrough. Those kids will be able to benefit from this new athletic facility, as well as the many, many children around Denver who currently participate in Kent Summer Camp. So, it really will be enriching for many. The school has a really prominent role in the history of Cherry Hills, as we know. It's certainly one of the finest schools in Colorado, and many people who live in the village really have a connection to Kent Denver, either with their kids that go there or as part of the very large alumni network. So, again, as a resident who lives right by the school, I do encourage you to allow Kent to update their athletic structure and support this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Waters, and then after Ms. Waters is Shane Cordes or Cordes.
Hi, I'm Jennifer McIntosh-Waters, and I live at 4201 South Dahlia. And as an alum, parent of alums, past trustee, and neighbor to Kent Denver, I am in great support of this. I appreciate Kent's stewardship towards a big piece of property, 200-plus acres, in the middle of our city, that they take great care of. And this is one of the last, very last buildings that needs to be redone, and it has been there, you know, prior to my going there, and I graduated in 88. So, I support the project. I agree with Sheila and Gina and Jerry, and so, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Shane Cordes or Cordes, and then after that is Deborah Tuckman?
Hi, yeah, Shane Cordes. I live at 45 Charleau Circle. I'm going to read from notes so I don't get off topic. My wife Jen and I moved here about three years ago, so we're relatively new, but we feel very fortunate. It's, it's a wonderful community. So, thank you, Mayor Brown, and council members for all you do to make this such an amazing community. We have two boys at Kent now, and our youngest to attend in the fall. We're very excited about it. We have two college-age daughters who wish we moved a little bit sooner, so they could have gone there too. So, I am here to support Kent and the Athletic and Fitness Center project. Three, three basic points. The project does not negatively impact neighbors. It's a very, it's thoughtfully designed, as I think you've all concluded, not to impact views. It does not encroach on existing open spaces, and it greatly improves the attractiveness and function of an outdated building, bringing it up to the standard of the other campus buildings. Kent's an outstanding neighbor of ours. The school allows members of the community to freely use the campus, open spaces, and trails throughout the year. I'm not sure a day goes by, I don't see somebody walking a dog, or maybe even a horse. The school is generous with the village and other Cherry Hills Village organizations when there are needs, like overflow parking for PGA events and what have you. I think I've seen the theater used quite a bit as well. And the project, again, to reiterate, does not increase the school's size or traffic, which the traffic is obviously a key element tonight that I've heard. It hosts existing programs and events already happening on campus, does not increase enrollment, and will greatly enhance the school's ability to serve the fitness and wellness needs of the students, teachers, and the, and the school community. Lastly, we believe Kent should be embraced and celebrated by Cherry Hills Village. It's an amazing educational institution that holistically promotes excellence in academics and athletics, giving its students a solid foundation in preparation for the future. Sitting in the middle of Cherry Hills Village, this sprawling, gorgeous campus shines like a beacon of opportunity for our youth and reflects positively on Cherry Hills Village. I think we should all be proud to have Kent as a neighbor, and I believe we all strive to be good to our neighbors. So, we strongly encourage you to approve of the project, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Deborah, I believe, Tuckman, and after Ms. Tuckman is Bart Bonsbach.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to, I'm just going to spill a speak in favor of this. They are, as we all-
Sorry, please state your name and address.
Deborah Tuckman, 4600 South Monroe Lane, and I knew I was going to forget them. But they are great neighbors. They do facilities for the care and well-being of the students, and I think anything that enhances their wellness and fitness is something that we should all support. I don't know how they do it, but they prove it to be efficient, timely builders. We clearly used the wrong construction people. Anyway, and I am a neighbor, really close. When you look on there, we're kind of really close to that number five. And in short, I'm not going to keep going on, because I fully support everything that everybody has said before me, and you all have heard it many times tonight, about the no mitigation to traffic, et cetera. But no one's excited about construction going on right next door, and it will be right next door to us. But there is just no, there's, it would be completely unreasonable to say, "I'm just not excited about construction," to deny what is such a clear need for this amazing campus that I personally use all the time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Bart Bonsbach, and after Mr. Bonsbach is Julie Kramer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Bart Bonsbach. Live at 1665 East Leighton Drive, and I'm proud to say that I've been a resident of Cherry Hills Village for most of my life. My family has lived and been involved in Cherry Hills Village community for generations. My great-grandfather lived and farmed and ranched in quite a bit of what Cherry Hills Village is. My grandfather developed Happy Canyon Shopping Center, and my family managed that for over 30 years. My father also developed the residential community known as Charleau, the neighborhood where I grew up, and my parents still live there today. My dad was actually, attended Cherry Creek High School, and he was in the very first class of Cherry Creek High School. I provide this background just to highlight the fact that Cherry Hills Village is very important to me, as well as my family. I attended Kent Denver and graduated in 1992. I still look back with so much gratitude for my time there. Some of my very favorite memories come from growing up in the village and being a student at Kent. It shaped me in meaningful ways and gave me my lifelong friendships, mentors, and experiences. Kent Denver is one of the finest high schools in the state, and we are fortunate to have it as part of our community, is a tremendous asset to Cherry Hills Village, not only because of the education it provides, but because of the character and values it instills in its students. Many families who live in Cherry Hills Village today have children who attended Kent or attend Kent or will in the future. The presence of such a respected private high school, along with the strength of Cherry Creek High School as a public option, plays a major role in why families choose to live here. Great schools attract great families, and that's part of what keeps this community strong. Kent also offers more than just education. Its campus is beautiful, open, green space with trails and fields that are not only enjoyed by the students, but by the community of Cherry Hills Village. It is a shared resource that adds to the character and charm of our village. For Kent to continue to deliver a world-class experience, the school needs facilities that match its standards. While much of Kent's campus is exceptional, the athletic and wellness facilities have not been renovated in many years and are now noticeably behind. In fact, in 92, I utilized those locker rooms, and back then, I thought they were decrepit and old, and can't imagine what they look like right now. But athletics plays a vital role in its students' development, far beyond just physical activity. Participating in sports teaches life skills that are hard to replicate elsewhere: teamwork, discipline, time management, leadership, resilience, and goal settings, goal setting. These are all values learned on the field or court and carried over into academics, careers, relationships, and everyday life. For many students, athletics are what keep them motivated, connected, and grounded during ups, the ups and downs of being a kid. They also help contribute to positive, positive mental health. So, in my opinion, for our students to have access to high-quality athletic and wellness facilities is not so much a luxury, but more a necessity. And it's important to emphasize, this renovation will not increase the size, as a lot of people have mentioned, the size of the student body, nor will it bring additional traffic or disruptions to the neighborhood. It is a thoughtful, responsible upgrade for the benefit of the students who are already there and for those that will follow. I strongly support Kent Denver's plan for this renovation, and I hope you will too. This project is good for the school, good for the community, and aligned with the values that make Cherry Hills Village such a special place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess the sky's saw fit to provide a little punctuation for your comments. Julie Kramer, and after Ms. Kramer is Sarah Pendergast.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me tonight and for all of us. I'm here to support Kent Denver, Denver's Athletic and Fitness Center project as well. I guess-
Can you state your name and address?
Yes, sorry. Julie Kramer, and I live on 31 Viking Drive in the village. I guess opposite from the speaker before me, I'm relatively new to Cherry Hills Village. My family and I moved here in 2021 from quite an urban place in Los Angeles. And what attracted us to the village is all of the things that we've heard about tonight. It's sprawling space, community feel, semi-rural neighborhood, and also, that's what attracted us to Kent Denver School. And I watched in my former community as schools closed their gates and put up walls and fences and what that did to children in the community, and it was really important to us to find a neighborhood that wasn't like that and a school that wasn't like that. And I remember, the first time I was walking in our neighborhood, I asked a neighbor who, where they went for the recreation center, where people went to the park or played tennis or went on a run, and every neighbor that I met in old Cherry Hills told me, "We don't need a recreation center. We have Kent Denver School." And that made me really proud, that my three children were about to attend there. They told me that you could access the High Line, you could run on the track, you could even play tennis sometimes, ride your bikes with your kids, take your dog, go fishing in the pond. And I was really loved hearing that and actually quite surprised that was true. And it certainly has run true, that, that is what the community uses Kent. I think that you've heard from others, that Kent is an extremely good neighbor, and we like to support our good neighbors. I'm also a trustee of the school, and I have been on the Board of Trustees of my former school in Los Angeles as well. And I will tell you that the care and thoughtfulness of the leaders of this school are just simply unmatched. They care so deeply about the village, as much as they do the children who attend the school, and they take very seriously the role they play in the village. And that, I think, is why you've commented that this was a very thoughtful design. It doesn't impact views or encroach in any of the spaces that so many members of the village use. And if anything, the new building will increase the aesthetics of the area and the visitors who come to the property. Also, as someone who commutes downtown for work and drives all around the area for kids' games, traffic is a huge concern for me, and so, I'm so glad that, to support the, this construction project that will not increase enrollment and will not increase traffic on Quincy or, or any other part of Colorado or university. Thank you so much for all that you do for our community and for having us here tonight.
Thank you. Sarah Pendergast, and then after Ms. Pendergast is Brian Wheeler.
Good evening. I had something prepared, but I am just going to be repeating what a lot of people have already said this evening. My name is Sarah Pendergast, and I live at 22 Carriage Lane, right behind Kent, essentially, as a crow flies. And I will tell you, my husband and I moved here three and a half years ago, and we made the bold decision to buy a house right next to Kent before we even knew if our children were going to go to Kent. And it was, houses were not, not, there were not a lot of them at the time, and we bought a very unattractive house. But I will tell you, the thing that we loved so much about it was the location. And we, our real estate agent was very smart. He walked us right to the High Line and said, "This is Kent," and we were sold. Whether we got in or not was still to be determined, but the property is incredible. It's expansive, and the people that you have heard from tonight, Jerry and David and everybody else that has worked so diligently on this project, is really inspiring, and they really care about keeping it exactly as the campus is already and maintaining the beauty of it and having everything that they're going to do hopefully fit in as seamlessly as possible. So, thank you for your time this evening, and I-
Thank you. Brian Wheeler, and after Mr. Wheeler is Margaret Bathgate.
Hello. Thank you for having me, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Brian Wheeler, excuse me. I live at 5 Viking Drive. I have lived in Cherry Hills since the late 80s, and I have to say that in all my travels, I tell my kids that I think we live in the nicest spot and the nicest state and the nicest country in the world, and very thankful that I've been able to stay here. And I also, like Bart, went to Kent, and I did write something better, but everybody said everything there is to say, so. Bart even took my joke about the locker rooms, but I will say that they were so nasty, I don't think I ever went in them back in the 90s. Excuse me. I think the only thing I could add is that I think part of being a good neighbor is also maintaining and keeping up with your property and facilities, and I think it's long past due, and I think that it'll be a benefit to the surrounding neighbors, the surrounding neighborhood, and I know it'll enhance, or continue to enhance, a drive that I've made thousands of times, that puts a smile on my face every day, seeing the open, airy nature of Cherry Hills and Kent Denver. So, and strong support, obviously, and I'll keep it short so that we can get home sometime. Thank you.
Thank you. Although, at this point, maybe you wanted to go long until it's, that's up. Margaret Bathgate, and after Ms. Bathgate is Adam Agron.
My name is, my name's Margaret Bathgate. I live at 6376 East Tufts Avenue. I've lived in the village since 1969, except for three years, when I moved into Denver and then came back. I had four children go through Kent Denver, and everybody has said all of the things that I would normally say if I was the first speaker. However, I think that as a former parent of the four children that went through, former trustee, former board chair, I was able, I was at the school when we did some of the major projects, for example, DeSo Field and the Science and Technology Center, when we expanded the upper school at that point. school at that point. So I've seen not only the fundraising side of it but also the building side of it. And Jerry was at the school then as well. He's been there forever. So I can attest, I mean, you guys have all seen his work, and you know that he's good to his word, and that is one thing that I will emphasize, is that when he says that he'll plant two trees for every tree that's removed, he really will. This has been thoughtfully conceived. It has been a long time coming, and I'm just sorry that my kids missed it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Adam Agron, and then after Mr. Agron is Matt Flavin.
Good evening. I'm Adam Agron. I live at 4600 South Lafayette Street. I want to start by thanking you all for your service as mayor and council members. Despite being a lawyer, I will be brief. We are here today to discuss an updating of Kent's facilities. This project does not involve any development, and it will not involve any expansion of use, programming, students, density, or traffic, but rather solely an updating and upgrading of Kent's facility. Kent has been granted similar approvals in the past, the most recent of which was in 2018 and was far more expansive than the current application. And Kent has always been a responsible steward of that trust and will continue to be a good neighbor in the village. Lastly, the village will only benefit from these updates and upgrades. Having a neighbor who invests in its buildings, their condition, their safety, their maintenance, and their facades should only improve property values for all village residents. So for those reasons, as a village resident, I'm very supportive of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Flavin, and then our last speaker is Mike Donnelly.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak here tonight. Thank you also for, you know, the staff and the council for what you do. I know it's not easy, and what you do is amazingly important to local government and to the nature of our community, so thank you for that. I actually went to Cherry-
Sorry, state your name and address.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I'm getting there. My name is Matt Flavin. I actually live on South Colorado Boulevard. We're 3900 South Colorado Boulevard, and we'll get to that in a second. I actually went to Cherry Creek High School, so it's hard in some ways to voice my overwhelming support for this project, but that's why I'm here tonight, to support this project. We are a neighbor of Kent. We live just a few doors down from the campus, and Kent has been a great neighbor for us. And I have prepared remarks. A lot of what I was going to say has been addressed by a lot of the good members of this community, but I want to focus just on what a good neighbor Kent is and has been. We heard about the use of the open spaces, the trails. That's something my two boys, our dogs, my wife, we've all benefited from that. We use these open spaces. The 200-plus acres preserve the semi-rural nature of this community, and when you go on the High Line Canal and have that view from the High Line over the Kent campus to the mountains, there's nothing better than that. In fact, one of the more meaningful moments for me, coming back here when I was in the military to visit Denver, I'd go on that run, and I'd think to myself on that one view, if I could come back to this community, you know, how special that would be, and fortunately we were able to do that. Kent continues to be a good neighbor with this plan. I think when you look at the planning process, the level of detail, the consideration for the surrounding community, I think they've gone to great lengths to make sure they continue to be a good neighbor. The traffic, which directly affects us, we turn directly onto South Colorado Boulevard, will not be increased, and so I think with this project, Kent shows that it will continue to be a good neighbor to this community, and with that, I urge you to support this new fitness and wellness center. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And last but not least, Mike Donnelly.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Mike Donnelly, 3920 South Birch Street. Like Mr. Flavin, I'm a Cherry Creek Bruin, so I thought I would spice it up a little bit, and, you know, everyone's been in favor of this, so I figured I would take the opposite side of it. I'm just joking. I have two children, an eighth grader and a sixth grader, that attend Kent. My wife actually went to Kent, and then we also have a third grader at Cherry Hills Village Elementary. I think everything's kind of been said already, but I'm very supportive of the project for three main reasons. This project does not negatively impact neighbors. Kent Denver's been a great neighbor, and the project will not increase the school's size or traffic, so thank you for your time and appreciate it.
Thank you. That concludes our public testimony. At this time, I would entertain a motion. Well, I guess let me check in with our city staff.
So I do think we have an update, and trying to get you something you see on screen.
Okay.
So give us just a moment.
Thank you.
Maybe I can make a comment while waiting for that, because I do just want to say that I very much appreciate the application and the thoroughness, and we very much appreciate Kent Denver being such a good neighbor in Cherry Hills and keeping their campus open. In this day and age, and as an 11-year trustee of Denver Academy, I can tell you that doing that from the staff and the Board of Trustees is not a minor undertaking and probably not done without trepidation, and so I just want to acknowledge the appreciation that we have in that regard to staff and to the Board of Trustees in that regard. And the other thing I'll say, because somebody made a comment about it, I said this, I don't know, five, six, seven years ago, I'll say it again. Jerry Walker is probably the best head of operations I've ever seen in an independent school, and I've seen a few.
Mayor, can I make that comment, too?
Absolutely.
So I also want to commend you for the thoroughness of your application. I was a six-year board director for Colorado Academy and was the chair of the Finance Committee when we built our new facility, our new gym and recreation center over there. So very familiar with this whole process and all of it, and it's about time that Kent upgraded their facility. But thank also the citizens. I was very impressed, new to the council, to see the level of support, the number of emails and the thoughtfulness that was taking the care, and even recruiting some of your luminaries, if you will, to write to us was impressive as well. I was just with Brandon Lloyd about an hour and a half ago, and he wishes he was here, but we were at another event together. But thank you for the thoroughness of your application.
Okay, I believe we're ready?
Ready.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience. So just for background, some of you have been here a little bit longer than others, but historically, there's been a giant patchwork of development agreements with Kent Denver based on a project-by-project basis, and some of those were amended ad hoc, formally, but ad hoc, reaching back, as my records reveal, to 2003. So those agreements were consolidated in 2018. The Agreement Before You Tonight builds on the 2018 agreement and references the city's lighting code, which does prohibit stadium lighting at that facility. It doesn't contain the specific language that was in the 2003 agreement. However, the good news is Mr. Walker has agreed that if council doesn't feel like the current provisions in the development agreement before them tonight is adequate to satisfy any concerns you may have, that he has no objection on behalf of Kent Denver to modifying the language of the existing agreement to put that prohibition in. So I have taken the liberty of having some language ready to put up on the screen for your consideration, and we can talk about that if you'd like.
And just to be clear, the agreement as it exists, as it's before you, does reference the code, and the code clearly prohibits stadium lighting. However, this would be if there was a desire to call back to that original language and have a sort of suspenders and belt approach, that would, this would be the way to do it.
Okay, well, I think we would like to see your suggestion.
Okay. So right now, Section 210 of the agreement says exterior lighting on the property must comply with all applicable provisions of the city code, provided that during the summer outside of normal school year, lights and parking areas will be turned off by 10:00 PM except during special events. So the last sentence has been added for your consideration, and it very closely tracks the language in the 2003 Stadium Expanded Use Permit Agreement. That one didn't reference the stadium facility designated as Dezo Field. It just called it the property in the application, but the Site Plan Amendment Before You Tonight does reference the facility in question as Dezo Field. I believe that's correct, Mr. Walker, right?
Yes, I would agree. I would just only add that this would not preclude us-
Correct.
-from petitioning this body in the future for stadium lighting at some point.
Or any other suggested changes you might want to request in the future?
Hundred percent.
Right, okay.
Yes, thank you. So right now, it just, the first part of that exactly tracks that older language, which is that they agree not to erect newer additional exterior projected lighting on the stadium facility designated as Dezo Field in the application, except as required by city's buildings and fire codes.
Okay, so the only question I have about that is it says designated in the application. Does this application designate that?
Yes, we can pull up the Site Plan Amendment for your reference. It's in the packet.
Well, I trust you.
Well, but let's confirm it. I think it's important, so I'm looking-
It's on the very first page of the 11 by 17 document.
Yes.
It is just under the R1 designation, does call out Dezo Field. I hope I'm saying that correctly.
I'm sorry, Dezo.
Sorry, Dezo.
So say that again. Where was that?
On the cover page of the Site Plan document-
Right here, yeah.
There's the R1 designation just south of what would be Quincy, and then just under that is the identified Dezo Field.
Yes, I see it right there.
Could you just, would it be, you know, you could just strike that, or additional exterior or exterior projected lighting on stadiums, stadium facilities, except as may be required by the application of the city's building and fire codes. Seems like that's comprehensive.
We could. That just would be a scope beyond what the original language was from 2003.
Yeah, the original agreement was only for this field. Right.
Okay, so it was that field, it just wasn't named.
Correct. That's all.
I'm good with that.
It was called the property in the application, which meant my fingers got a little busy here.
Okay.
So to be clear, if that's language that approaches where you're looking to go tonight, we would recommend that you would add that as a condition to the motion, which we don't, I mean, we have that motion ready, but we don't have this part inserted in there yet.
It would basically be c.
Yes, yes. A condition that, you know, you add to this, to the language of the development agreement. That lesson.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion, yes.
I move to approve Resolution 13 Series 2025, approving the Site Plan Amendment for renovations, too, and the expansion of the Fitness and Wellness Center for the Kent Denver School at 4,000 East Quincy Avenue, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall provide city staff with written evidence of Denver Water's approval of all proposed relocations or easements prior to the issuance of the building permit for the project. Two, the applicant shall provide city staff with written evidence of South Metro Fire Rescue's approval of the types and locations of fire hydrants prior to the issuance of the building permit for this project. And three, that the development agreement shall have added to it, Section 2.10, exterior lighting. Exterior lighting on the property must comply with all applicable provisions of the city code, provided, however, that during the summer outside of the normal school year, lights and parking areas will be turned off by 10:00 PM except during special events. Kent Denver agrees not to erect new or additional exterior or exterior projected lighting on the stadium facility designated as Dezo Field in the application, except as may be required by the application of the city's building and fire codes.
Second. Okay, so there's a motion and a second. I have one quick question for council and city manager. I know that there has been a patchwork of agreements and that you were kind of under the gun to review this. Are you confident that this is the key difference and that everything else is captured?
Well, that's why, I guess, we were asking for a copy of the email, just to make sure we understood what sections you were referring to. Not you, that sounded accusatory. I didn't mean it that way. I just meant we were conscientious of the same thing.
Yes.
We wanted to make sure that we were hitting the right target as well. Mr. Workman did an excellent exercise as a part of this process where he went through and summarized every change from one agreement to the next. You know, hats off to you. I'm glad you're here to do that. But from that, it allowed us to kind of go through that analysis pretty quickly tonight, so it really helped us in our ability to do that. I would say we are 99% sure this is exactly what was being referred to in the email and the operative section at play.
I know that this is the agreement that was forwarded as part of that email. I don't remember the entire agreement. I do remember this particular issue.
Yeah.
Are you comfortable that?
Yes.
Okay. So there is a motion and a second on the table. Any discussion? Well, I started down there. Councilor Heller, do you have any comments?
No comments.
No further comments.
No comment.
No comments.
Yeah, I would just add that I support anything that benefits the health and wellness, not just of students but also of staff, and I don't know whether that was specifically called out, so kudos to you on that. And as some of my colleagues have mentioned, the support of not just Kent families but other neighbors and obviously Planning and Zoning Commission say a lot to me, so best of luck to you.
All right, seeing no other comments, all in favor, well, let me repeat.
It's a roll call, isn't it?
It's a roll call. Yep, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Congratulations. Best of luck. And I hereby close the public hearing at 8:17 PM. And you don't have to leave, but if you are going to leave, I would just ask that you do it expeditiously and quietly because we do still have business items on our agenda. So thank you so much for being here and sharing with us, and until we meet again.
Thank you all very much for your consideration. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. Okay, so.
No comments.
Oh, we don't stand on that kind of stuff.
No, no, I'd rather have it that way.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. All right. Council members, we will move on to Resolution 14 Series 2025, accepting a donation from the Cherry Hills Village Police Foundation on behalf of the Cherry Hills Village Police Department Chief Lyons.
Good evening, mayor and members of council. If it pleases the group, I'd like to invite members of the Cherry Hills Village Police Foundation forward to just make a quick presentation.
We would love to invite the members of the police foundation. Just please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Deborah Berger. I live at 36 Cherry Hills Farm Drive.
Mark Griffin, 3236 Cherry Ridge Road. On behalf of the Cherry Hills Village Police Foundation, we're very happy to present a gift to the police department in the city of Cherry Hills Village in the amount of $25,000, which was a designated gift from Patricia and Jack Future, specifically for a canine Malinois dog.
Wow.
So I had about a half hour's worth of statements and things to say, but with no further ado, I'd like to ask Deborah, our board member, to present the chief with the check for $25,000.
Wow, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
That is incredibly generous.
Any questions? We have a lot of exciting things coming up, so stay tuned.
What is the, what is the timing of all of that?
In one minute, I'll be purchasing the dog, and Shadow is the dog's name.
That was my dog's name growing up.
Oh, really? By design, actually, is what we did, yeah. See what we're doing? We knew that.
That'll be my legacy.
The dog and his selected handler, Officer Michael Anderson, begin the K9 Academy on Monday.
Excellent.
Will we get a chance to meet the dog?
You will, you will. He is, he's a very even-tempered- He is, he's a very even-tempered Belgian Malinois, and so there will be, over the next few weeks, there'll be opportunities for the dog to be introduced to council, and will be sworn in as a member of the police department, so certainly would welcome you all to that event as well.
Awesome. Thank you so much, and thank you for waiting so patiently through the public comment. I know you're old hat at it, but.
Anyway, thank you very much, Chief. We have a lot of great initiatives working on next.
Yes.
So stand by. Thank you.
Thank you.
You need a motion?
I would entertain a motion, yes.
I move to approve Resolution 14 Series 2025, accepting a donation from the Cherry Hills Village Police Foundation on behalf of the Cherry Hills Village Police Department.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you so much to the Futures for their very generous donation to our community. I know that public safety is always at the top of mind, and our community and residents will be very appreciative of their generosity. The next item is a discussion about board and commission member terms. Kirk Clerk Gillespie.
Good evening, Mayor Brown, members of city council. We have several boarding commission member terms ending in May of this year. I've put up the table that's in your staff memo with the addition that Della Patterson on the Art Commission, just let us know she'll be moving, and the April Art Commission meeting will be her last one, so we'll have another vacancy there to be filled. So most of these members do desire reappointment. We have the attendance record on there. Some of them are partial in first terms, which according to your policy would be a reappointment, unless there's some known issue. Some of them are third terms, but that's up to council to determine if you want to reappoint, or kind of open that up for applications. So, reappointment of members, as I just discussed, we'll be doing resolutions for that according to your direction tonight. We are also asking for two council members to review applications, conduct interviews, and make recommendations for appointments to fill those vacancies, or to compare to, or compare against the members who have served two or more terms, if you so desire. As of right now, we have two applications, and we're hoping to get more before the end of the week. Some might trickle in still, so we'll be sending out some email blasts asking for that.
So if I could just jump in for a second and talk a little bit about, since this is several people's first time doing this, how this works. Obviously, we make these appointments, people apply if they're selected, they obviously serve. If they're not, we keep their applications on record. We passed, at some point during my time on council, we passed a policy that basically says that you can, when your first term is up, you can, not exactly an automatic renewal, but if you're interested in continuing, the council can decide to just have you continue and not put it out, and not advertise the opening and request applications. But we limited that to, it's not a term limit, but we said after your second term, whether you're interested in continuing or not, we're going to publicize the opening. And the thought behind that was that it sometimes is too easy just to keep having the same people, and that it's really important for our pipeline, our council pipeline, our volunteer pipeline, to continue to get people involved. And to be perfectly frank, there were also some concerns around people who weren't attending meetings, or weren't participating at the level that we needed them to, and we do respect that everyone is a volunteer, so you don't really want to go to people and sort of chastise them for not being good commission members. This is a way to basically say, it's not a performance issue. At your second term, we put it out there, and if somebody else is interested, we consider them. You might get appointed, you might not. We've always had challenges around volunteers, right? You ask people to serve their time, they come in for the interview, and then they don't get the position, and it kind of feels, you know. So I'm open to discussion, but I just wanted to give everyone the background of that's why that is. The BOAA in particular, also you should know, has not met probably in the last five years. Three years, okay. Or are they going to meet? Oh, it says one of one meeting there, so, yeah.
We did a training.
Oh, that was a training.
And so that's what that meeting was. We have not had a Board of Adjustment and Appeals meeting in my almost five years here.
Yeah, so.
Other than that training.
Mayor Brown, just a question. How do we, I know we publicize it on the website, or do we do any marketing to the community of opportunities?
Yeah, it usually goes in the crier.
Yep, crier, website, Facebook, Nextdoor, those kinds of things, but it is hard to get the word out.
And then we generally will, I know I have asked people when I know there's an opening, if there are people that I.
Directly solicit.
Yes, I directly solicit. There is, of our three, one other thing, I guess, to point out, is that of our boards and commissions, Planning and Zoning isn't on here, but PTRC is the only one that in its creation suggests that we have one member from each of the council districts, if at all possible. That's the only one that has that sort of, it's not really a requirement, but.
I noticed that, and I wondered why that's the only one, that we have that recommendation.
That's a good question. I don't.
Good question.
And furthermore, when we do form advisory committees, do we encourage membership from, that represent every council district, and maybe should we? Is this a, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
We're having an advisory committee about something.
Ad hoc committees, we, I think we do try to get representation, age group representation, geographic representation, yeah, all kinds of.
Laura, would you say that we get more interest for PTRC than we do the other boards? So, I think the reason, here's my suspicion, we get trails all throughout the community. And frankly, I think we have the luxury of being more choosy on PTRC, because I think there's more interest.
Okay, makes sense.
So, I think it'd be an admirable goal, but frankly, we want to make sure that we're filling the seats first.
See, I think, and I don't know the history either, but I've always thought that the reason PTRC was that way is because it indicated the importance that parks, trails, and recreation is to Cherry Hills Village, and it's been that way for quite some time, that in fact, not that Planning and Zoning, or BOAA, or any of our other committees aren't important, but that it indicated the importance of parks and trails to the city of Cherry Hills, and that everyone is represented. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's just what I've always assumed. But now, one of my questions, though, in this regard is, you know, and again, you're supposed to have representation from everyone, and then we get to have one at large, and if there's not, and we pick another one, well, three and four are empty, and we've got one that's been appointed and he wants to come in. If we get some for three and four, and they're acceptable, I presume that that probably overrides then at that point?
I would think, the way it's written, that would be, yes.
Yes, I agree with you.
That if we have candidates from, because it does say, sort of, you know, if possible, if we have candidates that are qualified.
Right.
From those districts, I think we would need to give a lot of weight to that. I think, I would agree with you. I think that, you know, Planning and Zoning kind of has two different roles. They have their review of applications and things like this, which is about applying the code to a situation, and that really isn't geographic, right? It's universal code, and it applies equally to everyone. They also have the master planning process, and that, you could argue, maybe should have more geographic representation, because different parts of the community have different.
Issues.
Well, I mean, I think they're all there to some, but they're bigger in some places and smaller in others.
Well, and to that end, we made, with the Citizens Advisory Committee that Doug was on, and I was on, and Rob was on, I mean, we made a big attempt to try to get as diverse grouping of people on that Citizens Advisory Committee for the master plan as we possibly could. It's just that it wasn't a requirement, that's the only difference, but we really did try.
And we had representation from all the districts for that.
Oh, there you go.
So, I think if, as we, what we need to come up with tonight is whether we want to, I believe, whether we want to just reappoint these people, whether we want to do, adhere to the recruitment trigger. I have, I'll just say personally, I get a little concerned when we don't choose to do the recruitment trigger, because it seems really arbitrary, and I don't want anyone to feel, you know, I chose to do it when it was your turn, but not when it was yours, and does that mean that, you know, I liked you more, I didn't like you? I think it's best just to be relatively consistent. Since the BOAA has not met, and that is a very important job, if it ever were to meet, I would be inclined to not necessar, well, we can do the recruitment trigger, nobody's going to apply for that. But I, that one, I would be inclined to treat a little bit differently, because they haven't had to do anything for five years. The others, I would, I would be inclined to just follow what it says here.
I think I'd rather go across the board. It's one policy, the trigger's the trigger. If BOAA is not subscribed to you, then they can get reappointed.
Sure.
Just a question, the CHVAC, is that the Activities?
The Arts Commission.
Arts Commission, that's right.
I had a little question, though, for Clerk Gillespie, on that last line. How does somebody attend six out of four meetings? Is that a typo? Is just a super overachiever?
She attended before she was appointed.
Yep, sorry about that, definitely a typo. I'd have to go back and look at the notes to get the actual numbers on that.
So I, I guess, and I can, I think that's a good point, Councilor Heller, that we could say, it appears that the people who desire to be reappointed and are in their, you know, are not recruitment trigger, is there, is there anyone that would choose not to reappoint those individuals?
Let's say reappoint.
Reappoint, okay, I agree, let's reappoint those, and then anyone for whom there is a recruitment trigger, that would be those, I guess it's going to be four positions, John Love, Tori Levitin, Aaron Gredinsky, and Della Patterson.
Where's Della Patterson?
She's at the bottom, because I saw the for sale sign go up in front of her house, and I'm, and then it's already evidently pending, it's been a week or something, so.
But we also will recruit for the two districts that don't have PTRC representation right now.
So, when we advertise this solicitation, we just say, apply for boards and commissions, and don't get into the district's.
Okay.
Part of it yet, just hoping to get applications and then process them, and if they don't get appointed, we keep them for two years and keep them on for any vacancies that come up. So that advertisement's gone out, we've gotten two applications so far, but.
Nobody knows what district they live in, anyway. But do you know which districts are represented?
For the two applications, yeah, we have a District 3 and a District 4.
Okay, so if those are your districts, and you know people that you think.
Oh, I'm sorry, that are going to be vacant?
Oh, yeah, which ones are not represented on PTRC?
Those same two, so District 3 and 4 are currently vacant on PTRC. Our two applications that we have are from 3 and 4.
Okay, great.
From those, so, yeah, but we do have those other two positions that wouldn't.
Okay.
Who was Della? She on?
She was on the Arts Commission.
Arts Commission.
Okay. That would be such a loss, I'm sorry that she's moving.
Okay, can we get two council members to do the interviews and make recommendations?
Yes. I would recommend one person who's done it before.
I'd recommend, I'm not going to recommend myself, but he's not here, and Rob, I think, would be stepping up to do PTRC, for sure.
I would think.
But I'm.
Well, and that's, let's ask Councilor Eber if he would be willing to do it, and then one of our newer, Councilor Heller, that was a resounding, a resounding volunteer.
For the record, that was half-bait, but I'll do it anyway.
You're here.
Thank you. Okay, and then, so is that, are we, is that what you need from us for that? Thank you. And our next agenda item is our discussion about hybrid and virtual meetings, carried over from our retreat. Again, Clerk Gillespie.
Good evening again. So this discussion is a request from council, and we are looking at the benefits and challenges, we're saying, of hybrid and virtual meetings. Our current policy is only allow hybrid or virtual meetings when there's a COVID situation, so this would be a change to that policy. So, council, or excuse me, staff went through, benefits might be flexibility, especially for council members to attend more meetings, or to have more council members attend more meetings. Challenges, technology, this room and the equipment in it were not built with hybrid in mind, that was added to later, it's sort of an addition as we've been going on situation. Security, there's still the issue of Zoom bombing, there was a, on my clerk list, there went around, that Bennett recently got hijacked at one of their council meetings, and some other clerks responded with, well, this is how we deal with it, and this is our extra measures of security that we put on to help with that, so that's something that we can work on, but is still kind of a concern and something to be aware of. Staffing, we do need extra staffing for hybrid and virtual meetings, especially the hybrid, because somebody kind of needs to be running the in-person stuff, and someone needs to be running the electronic stuff, and so we would need an additional staff member to be available, and, you know, pay them overtime or comp time, or whatever the case may be for that. And then quality of the meeting, we do have issues with everyone hearing each other, people talking over each other, people's technology at home versus the technology here, and just the quality of the discussion is something that council talked about, coming from all virtual COVID meetings, and why we came back in person, that was one of the things that was discussed. If council wants to go either of these directions, staff came up with just a list of questions, of considerations, things to decide of how this would work, and what all we would be allowing for hybrid and virtual, so we can go through that as needed. If council decides to move forward with implementing hybrid or virtual meetings, we would bring back some suggested amendments to the electronic participation policy, possibly the quasi-judicial participation waiver, and the city council rules of procedure.
Can I ask a question there? In reading the materials, I didn't understand what the quasi-judicial participation issue is. Why is, why is that an issue with a hybrid or a virtual meeting?
With quasi-judicial public hearings, the idea is everybody has the same information at the same time, and so adding the extra element of a virtual element, that could be people aren't hearing you, or there's something going on in their background, so in order to kind of cover all our bases, we put together this waiver that the applicant can, will sign if they are agreeable to having their meeting, their quasi-judicial meeting, their public hearing done virtually, is my recollection.
And just to supplement what Clerk Gillespie correctly stated, due process concerns are at issue, right? And so in quasi-judicial, you need, not only do you need to have all the information at the same time, but you need to be able to assess credibility and review all the documentation in a way that's meaningful, and allows the body to render a meaningful decision on the evidence.
Right, so, but how would you not be able to have all the information at the same time? Wouldn't, to the extent, like, we got these extra, these are yours, but we got these extra emails, you could deliver that electronically also, right? What is it that we?
Well, I understand. Testimony.
Maybe you can or can't hear.
There could be technological, absolutely.
Well, and I remember from the CML training video, I don't even know if they do that anymore, but that was 12 years ago, one of the big concerns is that I just remember it very distinctly, like, not having your phone out during a quasi-judicial hearing, that you're not texting privately with someone, that you're not referring to some document yourself that other people don't have, that you're not Googling things on your computer, looking up the aerial view of the. you're not Googling things on your computer, looking up the aerial view of the property.
Going outside the record.
Except that it's out in the open and you can see it.
Everybody could see that you're--
No, 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 I, no, I get it. But the point is, is that there could be somebody behind you advising you, I mean, I've been on court hearings actually where you're not allowed to do that. I actually was trying to advise this person a little bit behind me.
Oh, yeah.
Across the street. And the judge went, who is that guy back there? Get him out. So if we do, they don't want that to happen, you can't do that. And they'll, they'll cut you off. So that's my sense is at the end of the day is, is that you want to make sure that you are not getting any advice, counsel or information from outside. And you're absolutely right, we could be sitting here like we all do, but the point is, is, you know, it's more out in the open.
So if we are going to have a hybrid, I think we would want to consider that applying for council members to be available for being absent except for Counselor Holland, apparently.
Yes.
Who might be soliciting advice from others, apparently, he just divulged. Oh, providing, providing, sorry.
Yes.
Along the same lines, are there other types of executive sessions or other, other meetings where we would not want the policy to apply?
I think executive session is a really good point to bring up. Obviously, I have no concerns about anyone currently on the dais, right? But confidentiality of matters in the executive session are of premier importance, right? And we trust everybody always to walk out of the room and not convey, but if someone like Counselor Holland's hanging out in the background during an executive session, you know, it's, it's much easier for that to happen in an unmonitored, unaware fashion.
Still the time it can be planned for too, hopefully, but.
Yeah, I mean, you raise some really valid policy matters, as well as some legal concerns as well.
Another question that I have is about, so now that we stream our meetings to the public, can that even work? If someone is participating remotely, how do they, how does the audience watching the streaming see them or hear them?
Oh, that's not part of it, you don't, that's not blended in.
I, I don't think, see how it could be, streaming is, is a--
So the, the audio goes through the system and that's what the stream picks up. So whatever you guys hear in the room is what the stream picks up. It is more particular to the microphones, so that's why we ask you to speak into the microphones, but we have fixed an issue that we had with Zoom and the phone system and the, so we think it works. As far as visually, that pulls from that big screen, so whatever's on that big screen, unless they're using the cameras, they pull from that big screen. So if we have Zoom up on that big screen and they, you can see the person's face or you can see the PowerPoint or whatever it may be, that's what you see on the stream.
Well, it would only work if you're doing either the people or the, a presentation.
Which is kind of how it is now, I mean, you can either see y'all's faces or you can see the presentation.
Yeah, YouTube videos now, it's one or the other.
Okay.
Couple of other questions. Back to technology, so is Zoom the technology that would be--
Zoom's the one that we've used. Another alternative would be Microsoft Teams, that would require an upgrade of the whole system and we've been quoted about $40,000 for that.
Yeah, so, well, before the cost, I was going to make a statement that, you know, Zoom, I'm at critical infrastructure, can't use the, to get this right, you can use the the link but not the app because there's reported surveillance. It's just not a good system to use for government and critical infrastructure.
Well, I think generally that raises a point of being behind firewall, be, you know, whatever that might be, not being able to participate.
Could we use Zoom, or Teams or, you know, there are a couple of other products out there that are, so that's one question. Also, if we did do it, councillors would have to mayor agree, but some rules of etiquette I've seen, use that someone had raised before, that's hard to work your way in, you have to use the hand raising feature, backgrounds, so that you're not seeing, you know, what's behind and the like, phones off, someone mentioned, so just a couple of etiquette rules that kind of go with it.
So how would I, how would I do that if, like, how would I be monitoring if, if Rob were here tonight on Zoom? If, how would I monitor that he's raising his hand to speak? I know, but where would I see that? Would it be here?
I think you just start to take turns, you know, you would start, you know, on that end and say, instead of us jumping in, did you have anything, did you have anything, did you have anything, did you have any, you know, and then you go back the other way or however you want to do it would work the same.
That can inhibit the dialogue though a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it depends on what it is.
Yeah.
I don't know, I did a little bit of informal research, if you guys are interested. I have a peer group of four former school board presidents and they're all from the Denver area, Douglas County, Denver Public Schools, me. And two of those people are now serving, have now recently been elected to the Colorado State Board of Education. So we have this, you know, group. All four of them replied that they allow for remote participation during their local school board meetings. And the state board of ed also allows for this. But they've only recently added the opportunity for remote testimony by constituents, I don't know that we've talked about that yet. Some use Zoom and some use Microsoft Teams. They all did admit that it's sort of clunky at times, but they make it work because they would rather have that absent members input than not, for what it's worth. And cameras are required to be on. So then I called a good friend of mine who serves on Greenwood Village City Council. And they do allow both council members and staff to participate remotely. They feel that this helps, similarly, helps ensure that they get input from everybody.
Is this at every meeting, they allow it remotely?
Yes, but that's a, a good question too, and you may know this, at, their monthly meetings are a little different from ours, even though they meet month, twice a month, only one is scheduled to be a formal meeting with votes and the other one is study session. So they just sort of plan a little bit differently. So they do have two in-person meetings a month and I don't know whether, my friend implied that, you know, maybe he would be more likely to schedule a trip, he travels a lot for work during a study session than, you know, so for, for what that's worth.
But Karen, they don't, they don't limit the number of times you can be remote?
No, no. They are required to let the clerk know if they will be remote, get this, by the time that the packet is posted. So it's just, it's just like that, that three or four days before. And then 15 minutes before the meeting, they are required to log on so that the, you know, they can troubleshoot any issues with, with audio or whatever. And then he did say, and I did not take notes on this, but in the case of bigger votes, which may, he may have been talking about quasi judicial, but I thought he was also talking about following a hearing. As a courtesy, they notify the applicant, you know, Ken Denver in this case, and, and say, you know, Councilmember Fisher is going to be remote tonight, is it okay with you if she votes? And if they don't want that, they can, so I'm not, we would have to follow up on that because I didn't get that. And then he also just threw out that, so he's a proponent of this and I didn't even know that he missed some meetings. But as a council member for Greenwood Village, he serves on the Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority Board. That sounded like a really long name. And they also allow you to attend remotely. So everybody I asked allows for this, for what that's worth.
Just a comment, it's interesting, I'm, I've been asked to serve on the opioid abatement council and so twice a year they have virtual meetings, the others are in person, so just to--
So they do all, all virtual or all in person?
Yes.
Okay. That seems easier to me, but the hybrid thing just seems really--
But, but the all or none doesn't serve the purpose, if somebody's got to travel or a sick parent or, you know, whatever the case may be, because that's, I, I for one would limit the number. I, I don't think you want, I, I don't think we want as a council to be never here, that sounds extreme, but maybe, you know, a couple of times per year per councillor, per mayor, you know, something like that to deal with vacation, spring breaks, you know. I, I know in advance, you know, my, I have to be at my company board meeting in December, I could easily make this because the board doesn't meet in the evening, but I have to be in California that day.
Yeah.
Important meeting for, you know, city council, so that, that kind of thing.
So would that be like norms? Because then there's always something else that comes up. I agree with you. I, I, I would like to--
Hold them tight, so, you know.
Yeah, no, but would it just be sort of an agreed upon norms that we, that we would do our best to not attend or, you know, plan to attend more than two meetings remotely or what, I'm just picking a number? Because we can't really, because then you're, somebody gets sick or some, you know, well then, then you don't attend, right? I mean, I think we can agree on, I think we can agree on something like that and, I mean, and do it like a trial run. I mean, I, I'm not saying that we have to agree that everybody can be remote whenever they want, but maybe we, we, the only issue is all of the stuff that needs to be done in order to be able to do it, right, needs to be considered. And, and frankly, the question of what kind of software we can use is something that probably we need to take a good look at. But, but I, I think we could, we could do a, you know, and you can only do it twice a year or whatever it is.
Whatever the number is, yeah.
And if, if we do it and then it turns out, yeah, it's not so clunky after all, well then maybe we say, well, maybe it can be different. I mean, but we see how it works.
But keep in mind that if every person on council did twice a year--
It's every meeting.
That's pretty much every meeting.
From a staff perspective, that's every meeting. So while that may be limiting it for council members--
Yes.
It certainly doesn't limit it for staff. I'll just say, if I'm understanding you right, the trial period would be the trial period on sort of the limitations part of it, it wouldn't be on whether or not to do it, because if we wanted to do this, we're going to have to spend, you know, money, real money. So I guess I would suggest we ought to really want to do it if we're going to spend the money, if that makes, not--
Let me--
I would hate to back off on it after two months.
After spending all the money, right.
Yeah.
I mean, well, let me ask something else because I, I think this is very interesting, that Greenwood Village City Council only meets officially once a month. And things--
So I think, no, they, they meet twice, I believe they do public hearings, I think. I can, we can certainly get more information on this, but-- That's what I mean, right? So, so it's kind of an extension of it, but it's still a meeting. They call it to order, there's minutes.
No, but I don't believe they do, yeah, like, just sort of a consent, I think they only do a consent agenda once a month, that was my understanding. You guys can--
We'll, we'll, we'll look into that.
Well, if they do a consent agenda, then it is a meeting.
Yeah, they have to call a meeting to order and--
Once a month.
Oh, once a month. The other time you think it's just a study session. Yeah, because if, if it was, that would work, I mean--
What if, what if we just met once a month? I, I'm, I'm not trying to shirk my responsibility here, I'm happy to meet twice a month and, you know, I've explained why I'm interested in, in this opportunity to be remote a little more often. But, for example, I looked at the next meeting's agenda, do we really need a meeting in April?
Well, a lot of times when we have a empty agenda, we will cancel the meeting. That's, that's not uncommon.
You can't plan on that.
No, you can't.
You're right, you cannot plan on that.
Whereas if we said we're only meeting once a month, that gives you extended time away.
So, so just so, well, okay, regardless of what Greenwood Village does, we'll look into that, right? But under the once a month scenario, we would still reserve the right to meet the other time for, let's say, a study session or discussion items or something like that, right? So I would get worried.
I hear that, a study session's something you can zoom in for more easily than all of the issues around an official meeting, right?
Or you don't think so?
No, 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 I'm, I'm processing, we, this was a scenario we weren't thinking of when we put this all together, so I'm just kind of thinking about it out loud. I mean, we'll get, again, we'll get the Greenwood Village information, what I'm hearing though is there may be an appetite for discussing it regardless of what Greenwood Village does.
Yeah, I think, I think there might, I mean, just speaking for myself, I'm always open to new things, I'm open to, open to investigating this. My default will always be to meet in person. I believe in that, I believe, I don't believe that there's enough discussion, you've heard me talk about the open meetings law, I think it's crap. I think it really is a bad policy. It's good for transparency, it's not good for legislative decision making. And the more we can talk together and the more we can talk one-on-one and in person, we don't have that many issues that other people have, but from time to time, we're making our case, our words are good, but I'm like, I'm wanting to look into your eyes and going, hey, Katie, you know, what are you doing?
What are you thinking?
I mean, you know, what are you thinking? That's important as part of the process. It's harder to do on a Zoom basis, so my default's going to be in person, having said that, and I agree wholeheartedly, I'd rather have people participate than not participate. And if we were to go that route and a number of great things have been talked about, I don't care whether it's two times or whatever it is, I'd want to see all going, hey, we're doing this and it's flexibility, but we're all committing to do the best we can to be here. I'd always want that to be there.
So just, you know, so those are just my general reactions, but certainly always willing to investigate and look at something.
And I guess, yeah, from my 12 years on council, and so I acknowledge that, you know, this is the way we've always done it.
Change is hard.
Yeah, I, I totally acknowledge that. But without being specific, I just would like to say that there are a lot of people we would not have seen, we would not have seen, that people would not have come to the council meetings if it had been an option.
We didn't have people showing up to the council meeting when there wasn't any.
Just, and, and I'm not even just talking about one specific person, I'm, people, I'm talking about lots of different scenarios--
You're talking about council people though, not residents.
--that I've experienced in my 12 years that people wouldn't have come.
Council members wouldn't have come.
Just a comment, so I totally concur, I think being in person is much preferred. And I wonder if there are, are there a couple of months of the year where one meeting would be appropriate, where you could plan on that?
Well, we did, so we, we have done that July, we ended up, we did that while we were on council, we do one in July now and then December.
And then maybe that solves the issue.
Yeah, we, we could do another one as well and--
So, so real quick, just to, because I don't know how much we've got into it, we, we did, we were forced to all test drive a remote only policy for a while. You know, we all, you know, you had the grid, you know, the Brady Bunch looking, you know, thing and the, and we did the best we could with that. When we came back, we did, there were some meetings where it was hybrid and there was one meeting in particular where Al was remote and we had a technology challenge, we were literally holding phones to the microphone. It was, it was so challenging, it didn't work well, that's why I think the staff memo talks about we would need to make some investments for it to work better. There was a specific point though where there, the, the idea of there's benefits to being in person was discussed. So the fact that the policy still only refers to emergency declarations-- was intentional. Dan Sheldon specifically said, I'm tired of it, I don't like it, no more hybrid, we need to be in person. Now, there were challenges for us at that particular moment as well and I was like, oh, boy, okay. But that, I only bring that up not from a staff perspective, from a council perspective. So there is a history of trying some of these other solutions, they just had presented challenges where at the time, council had decided that they didn't want to do those by design, by intention, didn't want to meet in those ways. With that said, if, I guess I would just say, if, if you do want to do this, I just would request that we not do a trial period. If we do it, let us make the full investments so that we can do it as, as a staff, we can do it as effectively as possible because it, it will have an impact for us for sure, so.
The trial could be the frequency.
Yes, agreed, but--
Depending on execution circumstances.
Right, exactly. Twice a year. That's not what I'm referring to. Yeah, yeah.
I agree with you, I, if we did it, we would have to do it right and we'd all have to be committed to watching for somebody's hand that was up and, you know, we would do it because we believe that we want to include that person and that that person wants to be included, that person is away, but they still want to be included. You know what I mean? Like, we would, we would have to do it right.
You know what I mean? Like, we would, we would have to do it right.
But I do think, I do think the other thing though too, and we don't, like I say, we don't have that many. But we have two or three council meetings a year. One's gonna be coming up. I'm not even gonna mention what it is, where I want everybody at this dais. And I do. Because every once in a while, we have a couple or three issues that are very, very difficult for this community and for this council. And man, I don't want any, what, what are you saying? Hey, bub, bub, bub. I don't want it. But like I say, it's only a couple, three issues a year at most, that I've seen in my experience. And how do you, how do you do that? How do you know that? How do you plan that, right? But you know what I'm saying? I mean.
Yeah, no, I, absolutely. I do hear that this group is in a different place than previous councils were, and I think that's fair. I also hear from staff that it's not a trivial undertaking, and so I think we, we probably do need to come to a resolution. Personally, I'm, I'm not a fan. I prefer the in-person interaction. I think that was the commitment that I made to the residents of Cherry Hills Village when I ran for office. After 12 years, it hasn't been an overwhelming burden. I have had to miss a meeting every now and then, and that's just, that's okay. Like, it's okay. And if there are issues that I feel strongly that I wanna participate in, and I know I can't be at that meeting, I've brought it up to people and said, hey, is there any chance we could do this at a different meeting, or would it work at a different time so that we can have everybody there? I, I, I don't feel that it's been a problem for me personally, but I do hear that other people may feel differently about that. So, what is the pleasure of the council?
But I think the other thing to consider is, technology has changed, um, even in the last five years.
I don't know, Susan, I disagree.
I, well, I mean-
As a technology professional, I totally disagree.
The Dr. Cog subcommittee that I'm on is half virtual, half in-person, and it, it functions fine. So, I'm, and, and I'm not saying, maybe what we need is a better sense of what, what will be involved in terms of staff's time, and what will the cost be? And, and is there a different way of, you know, maybe we do quarterly, a month each quarter where we just have one meeting? I mean, I, I don't wanna not have the number. If we need more meetings, we need more meetings. But, but it seems like-
Well, the first meeting in January often gets canceled as well. It's difficult to do in election when we have new council, but even that has happened because it was like January 2nd or something like that.
By the way, one other thing, I don't know if this is on your list, Dave, uh, turns of courtesies or what have you. Etiquette. No turning off your camera. I'll tell you, I can't, I can't stand that. I'm on there and all of a sudden it goes dark. I call people out. I do. I go, this is crap. What are you doing? No, no, it's, it's garbage. I mean, it's, it's, it's just not right.
Well, the dog barking, the doorbell ringing in the background, the, I, I mean, I, yeah.
The people coming in and them, there's weather. Um, the other thing, I guess I, I would, and I, we have the list of considerations. Tonight may not be the night to do it. I think what, what I'm hearing is we can do a little bit more research on our side. We can bring something back. And then we might run through a list, uh, for you to weigh in on. And I, I guess one more I think we'll, we should add is whether or not we allow members of the public to participate electronically.
We did have a very lengthy conversation about that recently, and I am strongly opposed to that.
And I'm with you on that.
I am strongly opposed to quasi-judicial hearings over hybrid. I think it's, um, I think there, it's too much legal exposure, and I think it's just kinda disrespectful to the community. And-
And executive sessions.
And executive sessions would be included in that. And as far as these other things, I definitely think cameras have to be on if we're gonna-
I, I would, I would tell you practically speaking, we would probably try and do everything we could as staff to limit, I mean, if a council member was remote, there is certainly a way that we could have a public hearing in that circumstance if they were the only one who was remote. I would personally wanna do everything I can to avoid that. So, I appreciate those other folks being super flexible. They probably have a larger administrative staff to accommodate all those kinds of things. We would request that you give us far more notice. Also so that we could sort of maybe avoid scheduling public hearings on nights where we just know there's going to be a hybrid meeting. Hybrid meaning a council person's virtual. Um, we would do everything we could to avoid that, if at all possible. There may be a night where it's just not possible, and we have to have one for a whole host of reasons. But again, these are all just things I'm putting on your radar. I guess, Mayor, I would recommend that we schedule another session. Let us do some more homework. Specifically talk with Greenwood Village. Yeah, no, this would not extend to boards and commissions, I would assume.
Well, I mean-
Yeah.
I don't know, I-
We usually man those with a staff person, you know, oh my goodness, that would just be a whole lift.
That, that feels really uncomfortable to me though, and I'll be honest, it feels uncomfortable to me to say that we can participate remotely, but that our constituents can't. But, because, that feels uncomfortable to me.
But I think, I think you have to look at the rationale behind it. If it's because you want full council, as, as close to full council, consideration of the issues, to me, that's a different perspective than saying, yeah, you, you can go ahead.
But I, I want my res, my constituents' input too. I, you know, I think that treating ourselves, the legislature has done this as it relates to open records laws, and I find it, the hypocrisy of it is really challenging for me to say that, well, we can do it. The reason that I mainly oppose the remote testimony is because of the problems it has created in derailing meetings all around the country, you know, frankly, and that, we had that very lengthy discussion, and we contemplated a lot of options, and we decided that there's really no great alternative, and that what we have is, is the best it can be. But, um, I find that very challenging to say that what's good for the goose isn't good for the gander.
I don't disagree with you. But in, yeah, in my, exactly. In my brief research, very few of the people I spoke to allow, uh, their boards allow, they don't allow remote testimony. Is that if you wanna-
It's for that, all for that same-
It's all for those same reasons. So, it's what, it isn't done. So it's not like other people do it.
Well, some people do. I mean, the legislature actually does do that.
Because it's state, because it's statewide, and, you know, that's the only one. It was the statewide board. You know, so they have, they have people from wherever, so it's different, right?
Yeah.
But all of the local ones do not.
Well, and frankly, you know, when I've been in the, the state committee meetings, and they're having this remote testimony, and they've got, you know, people from this organization in California, and, and I'm like, but, so I, yeah, anyway, I digress, but.
Okay, and, and I think it would be interesting to hear not just what Greenwood Village does, but maybe if we reach out to a couple of other similar cities and see what they do.
We have a Metro Mayor's Caucus meeting tomorrow, if I remember to ask in the morning. I can just casually ask people what they do. Okay. Um, so that is clear as mud. Go do that. Uh, moving on to reports, I will keep this as brief as I can. First, I wanted to report on, I think everybody received the email from Paul about the property on Monaco that is being, um, proposed to be converted to a, um, rehabilitation treatment facility. We went, there was a public meeting, uh, last Wednesday, and I attended. There were a few people. Um, Councilor Fisher was there. The president of the Covington HOA was there, or not Covington, Charleux HOA was there. I will say that the, the company, Guardian Recovery, that is the, is the applicant, they had a very good presentation. They were very thoughtful. They're very respectful, very professional. They are genuinely concerned about the neighbors. And at the end of the meeting, several of us mentioned that no one in Cherry Hills Village had been noticed about it. At the end of the meeting, when, um, the owner of the company came up and was talking to me, and I showed him on the satellite photo the house that can't be more than a hundred yards from the, the building, not even the fence, like the building. And he was shocked, um, that that person would not, genuinely shocked that that person would not have been noticed. So they're not trying to slip things under the wire. One of the residents, uh, there's a condo complex immediately to the north of that building, and they have a lot of, in my opinion, very legitimate concerns. But one of the residents brought up that, um, Denver's code, and this is an administrative approval, so it doesn't actually require public hearings. Denver's code requires a certain number of parking spaces per staff person, and they don't meet it. And in fact, the Guardian Recovery people were very surprised to learn that and very concerned about that. They, I mean, his words were, that's not gonna work for us. Only, they only have thirty-seven, or thirty-two, thirty-seven, something like that, parking spaces. I went and was trying to look through Denver's code and was not able to find where that resident found that information. You might be more adept at Denver's code than I.
Yeah, yeah. I'll look. Uh, no guarantees, but I will, I will. That's an investigation that I will-
Yeah, to confirm that, because that's a, I mean, and as I, I shared with the Guardian Recovery gentleman, I said, you know, I, that is a big issue. I said, in our community, and I can't speak for Denver, but in our community, that would just be a deny, because you don't meet the requirements. Um, and like I said, he was concerned that it doesn't really meet their requirements either. The long and short of it is that, um, there, one key component is that it is not a lockdown facility. So people can leave at any time, which at first was very concerning to me, but then as he explained it, because the people are there voluntarily, he said, it's not, if they wanna leave, they can just go out the front door. They're not escaping through the back door and climbing fences and escaping into, they can just, they can just go. Well, that made a lot of sense to me. Um, they have statistics. They operate facilities like this around the country. They have statistics around how often, and he even admitted, he said, our, our juvenile facility in Florida, different story. Those people are jumping the fence and trying to escape out the back door, but he's like, not these facilities. So I, I guess I would stay, stay tuned. The other thing that was very important, I had raised the question about, you know, Denver has this old zoning and new zoning, and the affordable housing project that came up a year ago, the whole rezoning application was predicated on moving it into the new zoning. We're trying to move, move everything into the new zoning. This application is still under the old zoning, and they're not, they're not rezoning the property. So they weren't bringing it into the newer zone. And I specifically asked what, why not, and what would it look like? What would the requirements be if you were to rezone it? And in fact, that would be much worse. And what were the things, the one, one I remember is that it, under the old zoning, this use approval is tied to the, to Guardian Recovery.
Right.
And if it ever changed hands, the new owner would not by default get to, you have, under the new code, they would. Once the use has been approved as a recovery facility, it, they could sell it, they could, I'm like, well, I, so, okay, older zoning would be better. This company seems to be very responsible. But if it were to change hands, we don't know. Um, and there were some other things along that, that, like, running with the land versus running with the applicant. So it seemed actually in our residents' best interest to do it the way they're doing it now. I'm curious, Chief, do you have any concerns about it?
No, not really. So this particular facility is, to the mayor's point, is not a, a holding facility for people who might be under involuntary, um, commitment. It is a, it's a voluntary, long-term treatment facility for, for folks who are not ordered, uh, by some sort of outside entity. So, no, on its face, certainly not, but I would, I would have to, to dive a little deeper into, uh, the clientele to identify exactly what any potential concerns might be.
They did say-
Is it a, is it a high-end? Some of these facilities-
It seems pretty high-end.
I mean, it's, it could be, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollars a month.
It seems pretty-
To attend some of these.
Yeah, it seems pretty high-end. The, uh, he did say repeatedly that this is not for people who are in crisis. They have a facility at Porter for, for that. This is for people who have been stabilized and are there voluntarily. Somebody did say, well, what does voluntarily mean? And he acknowledged, you know, nobody wakes up after, what were his words? Nobody wakes up after a great weekend and says, "I'm gonna check myself into rehab." He said, no, you know, they're there begrudgingly, perhaps. Their employer has told them that it's either get treatment or be fired. Their spouse has told them. So they don't necessarily, you know, they're not happy about it, but they are there of their own volition. So it'll be, we'll just monitor how that goes. Again, we don't have any say in the process. We are, we can submit a letter, and, um, I know Paul want, will, when he gets to his report, we'll try to get some consensus from the council about whether we should, as a city, provide a feedback letter. I, well, I, is everybody in agreement with that, that we should provide our thoughts? Okay. So, go forth and do that.
Just, just to, I guess, put a finer point on that. So comments are due April 11th. Generally, the way this works is, um, I'll take a, a first cut at putting together a letter, share that with city manager, the mayor, probably Councilor Fisher, since it's closer to her district, uh, and then we'll work through that letter of response. Usually the mayor would sign that, and we would send that to Denver by the April 11th deadline. Uh, I guess I would just kinda look for a head nod. Is council comfortable with that same approach for this, for this facility?
Um, so I think that wraps it up on that facility. Um, also wanted to let everyone know that, I mean, there is a whole slew of stuff going through the legislature, but the Yigby bill that would allow religious institutions passed, it has passed the House, it passed the Senate Committee. These are all on party line votes. It is now going to the Senate floor. Um, a CML, you guys get those CML letters where they've asked us to reach out to our senators. I mean, please do reach out to Senator Bridges. Um, he is the chair of the Joint Budget Committee, and I, I don't know how many, how much bandwidth he has to devote to this right now, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't, we are his constituents. It doesn't mean we shouldn't reach out to him. But if you know any other senators or have relationships with them, feel free to reach out with them as well. Um, and I will get an update from the Metro Mayor's Caucus tomorrow on, the Metro Mayor's Caucus is opposed to it, CML's opposed to it. I'll get an update tomorrow on any coordinated efforts that, um, Metro Mayor's might be doing.
Mayor Brown, what do you think is the most effective argument to make?
I don't know that, I mean, I don't know that there is one. One that I don't think has been made yet, and I would be interested in the opinion of- of the attorneys in the room, because I'm not one. The, we have development agreements with all of these religious, the properties are zoned residential. We have development agreements with most of them, I'm assuming, to use the property as a religious institution, as a sanctuary, et cetera. It seems to me that building housing would be in violation of those agreements? Because that's not specifically allowed in that agreement?
Well, like any good attorney, I'm going to tell you, that depends, right? I think there's a, you're obviously familiar with the, the statutory, the federal statutory constructs, constitutional issues of impairment of contract, some of those other matters in addition to the terms of the agreement. We'd want to take a look at that.
Yeah. So I don't think that, I don't think anyone has contemplated that. They don't know, because they don't know how local government works. They don't know, they'd never heard of a development agreement. They don't understand how these institutions even came to be built or operate to begin with. And so I don't think they understand that you can't just legislatively nullify agreements between two parties. I don't think. Whether it's true or not, I don't know, but.
That's, that's true, but, but the government can take actions that have impact on contracts, whether, depending on what the issue is, whether it's a force majeure, whether it's commercial impracticability, I mean, they, the government can take actions that ultimately put the, put the contract in a position where it can't be performed. And so then there must be a corollary to that at the end of the day, which sits back and goes, hey, we don't have to agree to this anymore.
Yeah, unless there's some constitutional other basis not to, I, I think that's right.
Yeah, I mean, it, it seemed to me that if they came with an application to build housing, we could hold up the development agreement and say, it's not allowed. Thanks.
Again, but assuming it's the same party, the, the run, or, you know, didn't run with the land, if it's a different party, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I think.
A lot, let's just say, we wouldn't be alone in trying to delve through all the issues that this kind of legislation.
It also could be that the counterparty agrees with the legislation and that puts us in a really tough spot.
For sure. Oh, yeah, I mean, I would imagine they would. Yeah. So I don't know, I think the arguments in the CML paper around local control is obvi, it falls on deaf ears, they don't care, but I think it's the strongest, most significant argument. I, when I testified in the House Committee, I tried to think of it, put myself in their shoes and think about the things that they would be concerned about, the potential opportunity for discriminatory practices. You know, we've seen lawsuits already with, for example, Catholic preschools and the universal preschool program and, you know, religious institutions have some protections under federal law that allow them in some cases, frankly, to discriminate.
Yeah, to advance their doctrine.
Yes, and so I think that is concerning to a lot of the Democratic legislators. We all, I also talked about, and other people, they maybe have addressed this through some of the new affordability measures that were put in, but we talked about the opportunity to just build multimillion dollar condos. You know, they're not interested in that. But those arguments have been made and clearly. Nobody cares. But it doesn't mean we can't keep making them. So I think I would just also like to say, in response to the three people who spoke earlier today about traffic and the questions about how we plan to engage with them about traffic, I think that's a fair question. Unfortunately, they don't know that we did discuss traffic at our retreat. And I'm wondering what the best way, I, I would like to respond to them in some way and say, we're, here's, here's what we're doing. I don't think they're going to be real happy to hear that, though, and so I'm not sure what the best way to communicate that message is.
One thing I, I know, I wrote down to take a look at that, what do they call it? The, the island? I know that it was put in years ago, things are different. Is that something we should assess?
Well, like I, I think what I said at the retreat, and I will reiterate it here, the, the pitfalls of the roundabout, right? There were quite a few people in this room. It is a tiny fraction of the people who live in Cherry Hills Village. And so we have to be very careful about extrapolating the very strong opinions of a few people who admittedly are more directly and adversely impacted. So they, their position carries some weight, but it's even a small fraction of the people who live in that part, area of town. I live in that part of town. You know, it, it's predominantly people from one neighborhood. And I think that we would have, before we do anything, we would need to hear from other people, we'd need to hear from other people. And so, you know, when, when they were saying it's a, you know, a, I forgot what the word was, but I'm like, yeah, 50 people's a lot, but.
And another question, maybe this is for staff. The ability to persuade RTD to change the timing of the lights, is that just something that's off the table?
It's actually Denver.
Denver, okay.
Controls that light.
It wouldn't be off the table, but just like the island, for every action, there's an opposite and equal reaction. If you improve traffic flow, you're going to increase traffic. And when I talked to Denver, they said, we, we're going to stay with the merits. And I was talking to one of their senior traffic engineers, I'm not a traffic engineer. If you make it easier for people to use, more people will use it. And that's what they were worried about. That's what I'm worried, that's what I'm worried about, is you increase the time, you take the island away so you can queue 10 people. Okay, so now traffic, those 100 cars are moving fine, Waze sends another 100 people that way because there's no wait. And so it's just perpetuates, okay, so we've improved traffic flow, now we have increased traffic again. It's just, it's a never-ending cycle and I would want a traffic engineer to really study that for us.
But I thought where we, where we came out of the retreat was that we were going to look at what were the options with that island in terms of removing it or removing it.
I don't recall that one.
I don't recall that.
We were going to do a traffic study for, but that would be in, more in line or comport with the citywide traffic study that was done in 2016.
Yeah.
So this would basically be an update of that.
To see if things have gotten worse.
No, I, I understand that, but.
I, I don't recall.
I thought, I thought there was some discussion about, could that island, could that turn lane be extended longer and what would that involve?
There was, I'm the one that brought it up and I was convinced that, all the reasons why it would just increase, you know, what was just said. So I, I know I was the one that brought it up because I remembered from the, because I was here for those, for that hearing.
And, and I.
I'd ask that, and I don't live in that area, but I find myself at that intersection several times a week, so I would respectfully question whether it's just people who live there, you know, so.
And I will just clarify one thing. I think everything Jay talked about as far as the balance between, I mean, I think part of the reason why the island was put there was to act as a deterrent for more cars to come in. With all that said, Denver and CDOT, it doesn't matter if it's at that intersection or any of the others, the signal timing, prime, the first order of operations is to look at the traffic flows. That is the biggest driver of it. Jay was successful and they mentioned it tonight, they, they, they sounded dubious that it was real, but we were successful at getting some additional green time. But we're, we're not going to ever change that beyond nibbles. The, the, the traffic volumes are going to drive the signal timing first. And then they'll take into consideration other factors like, are we inducing more congestion, more volume by opening up more free-flowing lanes?
But the issue, and, and this is just one issue, is, is a have been, I'm sure many of us have, been on Colorado where that green arrow, and there are three cars that can fit in the turn lane, and then the fourth car is going straight, so you're stuck behind that fourth car and you see the arrow and no car is going through. And just if that turn lane were longer, you could get, you know, you should be able to figure out how many cars you can get through.
Or like the person said tonight, you're, you want to go straight, but the person in front of you wants to go. Yeah, so either way. I, maybe the answer, though, is that we let them know that we have, that at our retreat, we did discuss this, we did a full thorough study session. I learned a lot. I've never served on city council before to learn about the, those traffic mitigation strategies and stuff. And so we are, we have asked for another traffic study and when we do that, we will invite everybody to come and we'll do a study session for them.
Wasn't going to be until next year.
True.
Well, we have to budget for it.
But we let them know that we've budgeted for it, we had, we did discuss it, it is in the works and.
And I think there's also, and I agree with that, I mean, I think communication, but I mean, the other, the problem that we have, and we all talk about this, right? Cherry Hills is a very unique community. The uniqueness is we are an island that does not have the resources that everybody else has. And there is very little that can be done. That doesn't mean we don't try to address it and that doesn't mean that we don't try to do what we can, but it's only going to get worse and it's going to continue to get worse. There is living, I mean, you can prohibit, you can reconstruct roads. There is no third alternative. That's it. And we're not going to prohibit, can't prohibit, well, sometimes we can, but most of the time we can't. And we're certainly not going to say, okay, Covington, guess what? We're going to reconstruct this road and we're going to start doing eminent domain and we're going to, we're going to do a whole bunch of things, roundabout. I mean, we couldn't get that done. This is, it's like a, it's like a, it's, it's, it's what makes us unique. We are surrounded by city and it's not going to get any better. That's a problem, but it doesn't mean that we can't address it and communicate. And I hate to say this, it's like, oh, hey, you got any ideas? I mean, you know, it's just like the cell phone thing, people come out of the woodwork with all kinds of crazy things, but it's like, dude, I mean, what, what do you want to have happen? They want prohibition. That's, that's what they want and we're, you know, our roads are public.
I think part of it is that they want to be heard and I like the idea of the traffic study, we agree to it. The other thing is that gives us the benefit of Brave Church running for a fall and a spring before you do the traffic study, which I think is important.
Well, I think it makes sense. I think maybe it was Rob who at the, at the retreat brought up that there, as soon as we say we're going to do a traffic study, I mean, that's not the response they're looking for.
I was going to ask, though.
But that is what we've decided, so.
I was going to ask, though, Paul, and I didn't at the time, well, because it wasn't appropriate, let me just ask now, you know, we're allowed to monitor, et cetera. I mean, we had people coming, it al, it almost made it sound like they're saying, hey, this is already getting worse. I use that intersection all the time, that's my intersection. I haven't noticed it getting worse. Have we been monitoring, have we noticed it getting worse?
We have monitored it, not, I mean, we haven't done a.
Yeah, because they still have.
Like a traffic count or anything like that. But yeah, they, their, their enrollment did not, will not increase for this school year.
Right.
It could potentially increase next school year and in the future, so there should be no change in the functionality of the school until next fall.
And obviously, one of the things that we will do, I would hope that it's obvious, is that when they get ready in the fall, there'll be a come to Jesus meeting with them that basically goes, now you know, guys, you got to start getting all kinds of complaints, it's, it's going to come down hard on you.
Yeah, so.
So you, you better be paying attention to this and doing everything that you can.
You're talking about with Brave?
Yeah, with Brave.
A coming to Jesus meeting with Brave?
Yes.
Pardon the pun.
Just, just to clarify, they'll bring Jesus. So Ty, you may recall, Ty, who was, did most of the speaking, he and I are trying to schedule some time this summer to get down what their final enrollment's going to be for the fall, have that discussion. I'm scheduling time with him for the first few weeks of school to be out there to see how things are functioning and then we'll make adjustments as needed. And then, right, we want to, I want to try and focus the, the monitoring of it early in the year and then see how that goes and then, like, once a month, once a quarter, something, meet out there with them and observe during their pickup and drop off and that sort of stuff. So, yeah, it's very much on, on our radar.
And is the coordination with Kent Denver that's happening as well?
That level of coordination, no.
No, I mean, in terms of between Brave and Kent Denver in terms of.
Yes, 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 that does occur, yes.
And so what I can do to help out is I will have staff put out some traffic counters for more than 24 hours. That's was the complaint. We'll do a couple, we'll do a couple one-week studies during the school year before this summer, just to get some pre-new enrollment numbers and get an average over a couple different weeks. So.
Well, and possibly we could even compare that to the 2016 traffic study, if they did traffic counts there to, to get now a second data point.
Yeah, and we can, we can do some at Mansfield, Colorado North, Colorado South, and at least have a baseline and the historic data that we.
Well, it would probably be good to do it before school lets out.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Before summer, because summer counts don't, don't do it.
This month and a little bit of next month.
Yep.
So get on it.
Yeah, no, we will.
Okay, that was my very brief report.
Counselor Fisher. Famous last word. I had something small to add to the 4901 South Monaco project, and I'm going to read it. This is mostly for Director Workman. There is a section in their application packet that says, quote, "Guardian Recovery is committed to providing a community liaison position specific to the project as a full-time staff member, as an ongoing contribution to community concerns and resource availability", end quote. So I think that when we submit our official comments, we should reference that and, you know, ask again specifically.
Yes.
That we be included in that communication and we meet that person. Like what's.
Yeah, if there's any standing meetings or communication or any of that.
Yep, we need to be added to their distribution list. And then the only other thing I have was happy passover to our colleagues who celebrate. Counselor Robinson.
Nothing, thank you.
The Crier. Nothing. Paul.
No report, just want to compliment both Jay on the traffic study and Paul, that really was a great presentation and do pass on planning and zoning, I was really, really impressed. I also want to, I know I tend to be a little overzealous about this, I thought Katie's article in the Crier was terrific and if it was me, I would be sending that to everybody that could, in the, in the General Assembly. And I commend it to everybody. And then I was wondering about this, Chief, with all of the construction traffic that's going to be going in and out of West Entrance and/or on Homonroll right near Random, is that going to have, is that going to require, require any special considerations for your coordination with our Secretary of Energy when he's home?
No, not likely, although I, just as a matter of information, he, he'll be in town this week, speaking at the Country Club and then just enjoying a weekend home. And we are in constant contact with his details, so anything that goes on in that neighborhood, we, we pass along to them and then they can adjust their, their transportation.
I would think that it would make them nervous with, and there's going to be a lot of traffic coming in and out of there for at least some period of time, right?
Yeah, yeah. No, we'll, we'll pass it on as information and then they can adjust from there.
Counselor Helen.
I'm just getting geared up on the Centennial Noise Meeting. So finally got that worked out and I will note that their meetings are hybrid, so just add that little.
Staff.
I will let staff go through first.
I have no report. Nothing further from me, you've heard enough from me tonight.
Just a piece of information, the Citizens Academy for this year starts Thursday night. I know that I've mentioned this before, but it's such an exciting.
I know that I've mentioned this before, but it's such an exciting opportunity for us to, to not just educate, but really to engage with members of this community. And that class filled beyond its capacity within the first five days it was open. And I just, again, I just reiterate that that speaks to the character of this community. And unfortunately, had to turn people away, just we don't have the, the venue that will, will allow for more than 25 students. So I'll keep you updated as the class goes, and certainly invite you to graduation that first Thursday in June. Thank you. Well, it's older. Let's start there.
Who you calling old?
No, no. Mostly, I would say probably median age is 35 to 55. A few younger, a few older, but generally in that, at, I don't know how to, I'm not gonna classify that group, I suppose, but it's us. Let's, let's just go there. So it's our group.
For May 20th, we're looking at doing a ribbon cutting for the Quincy Farm barn before that meeting. Right now, we're thinking that we would do the ribbon cutting around 4:00 PM, come back here for dinner, and then start the study session at 5:30. But wanted to get council's opinions, any concerns with that for May 20th before we send out that invite.
Works for me?
And then we wanted to check in on April 15th, since we currently don't have anything on that agenda. We'll, we'll work on that hybrid meeting stuff and bringing that guys back to you, but probably won't have that ready for that packet, which would be next week, so.
Okay. City Attorney?
Nothing for me.
City Manager?
Yes. So I will be out of the office Thursday and Friday. Jay will be sending out the weekly report this week. That was news for him. He didn't, he didn't know that until just now. So hopefully it's as seamless as possible for council. And then I did wanna thank Jay and Paul. For our newer council members, I, the, the pavement memo itself, I learned a lot in that memo. And I've been working in local government and with engineers for 25 years. And there was a lot of information that I learned in that. That was very well done. I thank you for the extra effort on that. Paul, you know, I think, again, what on its face seems like a routine case has all sorts of opportunities for things to come up. And I'm not even really talking about the, that's separate. I mean, just so everybody knows, in the 2018 agreement, right, it didn't, it got, it got, that's when it got modified. It didn't get modified tonight. It got modified in 2018, which predates Kathy, it predates us. So we wouldn't have done it that way. We probably would have handled that slightly different. But nonetheless, I think we came up with a really smooth solution tonight. But I do wanna thank Paul for not taking those things, those kinds of hearings for granted. This is our philosophy, this is our approach. So kudos, hats off to both of you. So with that said, that's all I have.
All right. I will adjourn the meeting then at 9:44 PM.